Hey, everyone. I like the call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostik.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Present.
Great. Thank you, everyone. So there's no change to our agenda this evening, though we did have to, we were supposed to have a presentation earlier tonight from Billy Atteca about some of their library locker system. Unfortunately, they had to cancel this afternoon and I'm going to regroup with them later this week to see when we can facilitate a presentation. It may end up being smaller presentations of later on in the year. So but I just do want to thank Councilmember Smith for bringing them to our attention. And I will give you more information when I have it after Friday, when I speak with them. Looking ahead at our meetings coming up. Let's see. Don't forget, Monday is President's Day, and the city offices and facilities are closed Sunday and Monday for the holiday. On Wednesday, February 17th, we will be back here for our regular meeting, starting at 7:30. We will begin with the recognition of the Montgomery College Scholarship recipients. At the top of our meeting, then we'll have a presentation from the Crossroads Farmers Market updating us on their last season they had. Our voting session next week is a resolution establishing February 23rd as Lee Jordan Day in Tacoma Park. I think a lot of us thought this had already been done, but I think there had been a proclamation by a prior mayor, and we want to pass a resolution, so we have it in the books that February 23rd is Lee Jordan Day. We also hopefully will have a resolution providing for appointments to the Task Force on Reimagining Public Safety. If we don't do it on the 17th, we will definitely do it by the 24th. We will have a single reading ordinance amending police vehicle purchase ordinance. Our work sessions next week is an update on the City Committee review. So Councilwoman Dibala is in the hot seat next week for that. And then we have an update.
Along with, along with, along with Councilmembers Circe and Kostik.
Okay. All right. So all three are in the hot seat next week on that one. Then we have an update on our city manager search. We'll have a discussion of budget hold items that are on, continue to be on our list. We will continue and hopefully start coming to a conclusion on our discussion of our council priorities and a draft resolution on that. And we have a discussion of an FY 2021 Budget Amendment Number Four. Then on Wednesday, February 24th, our regular city council meeting, we have two public hearings that night. One will be on traffic calming, and we will post which of the traffic calming requests we're having the public meeting on. And then we also have Stormwater Management Fee System Public Hearing, and we have the work session tonight on that. Our voting session tentatively is a resolution adopting council priorities and the first reading ordinance approving FY 2021 Budget Amendment Number Four. Our work session that night will be on property tax relief proposals, credits, and other approaches. And we'll continue our discussion of the Stormwater Management Fee System and Code Amendment. Then on March 3rd, we have our voting session is the second reading of our FY 2021 Budget Amendment Number Four. And tentatively, a discussion of council procedures. And that takes us through to early March. And tonight, the next thing we have is a proclamation for Troop 33. I think some of them may have hopefully been able to join us tonight. But this is something that we had wanted to do last year because Troop 33 celebrated their centennial. I will read the proclamation for everyone. Whereas Troop 33 has been a unit of the Boy Scouts of America since 1920, demonstrating a long history of community engagement and service during its tenure in the scouting movement. And whereas it is rare for a troop to celebrate a centennial birthday, and even more so to be chartered by the Boy Scouts of America at the same organization for the entire duration. And whereas Troop 33 has been proudly chartered by the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church since day one, and both the church and the troop are institutions in Tacoma Park. And whereas the unit has fostered the advancement of 164 scouts to the level of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement level in the scouting program. And whereas Troop 33 continues to engage in civic participation, conservation, and outdoor education, life skills development, and wellness training. And whereas in the new year, Troop 33 reaffirms its commitment to further the aims and values of scouting in the United States to prepare youth to make good ethical and moral decisions over their lifetimes. Now therefore, I Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents, do hereby recognize the centennial of Troop 33 of the Boy Scouts of America. So congratulations. I think we have some representatives here from Troop 33. I don't know if you all want to just say a few words. Lee, your hair's getting pretty long there. COVID-19.
You noticed.
Yes.
Yeah. A year without a haircut, we'll do that. Anyway, I actually, I can have the Scott Master Hammerstrom say the first words. He's, he's the leader. If he's so chooses.
Yeah, thank you, Lee. Yeah, I just want to thank the council for this proclamation, for recognizing Troop 33 and the role that it's played in the community for the last 100 years. It's a, it's one of the oldest Boy Scout troops in the country, and it's distinguished, as you heard, by a significant over 160 Eagle Scouts over the course of the troop's history. So it continues to play a really important role in the community and provides great opportunities for a lot of the youth in our community to learn leadership skills and to, to develop outdoor skills and experience the outdoors. So we're, we're thankful for your time tonight and appreciate the recognition.
And just to say, we're, we're very proud to be part of a long tradition of civic engagement within the community. We see that I've been working on the, the troops archive of the last 100 years, over the last, I don't know, three to five years, there's, there's quite a bit of content. And I've spoken with folks over at the Historic Tacoma Incorporated, like Dinah Cole and others, and learned little things like the, the year that we were founded in 1920 was also a year where the community really wanted to rally to support the continuation of the Independence Day Parade. And they really wanted to get children involved. So it's no accident. I think that that year we were founded, not only that, but the country had just been through a pandemic. The influenza pandemic of 1918, 1919. So I think people were really ready to get out and do, do something, you know? And so it's kind of interesting how, how some of those historical moments have significance to us now. But anyway, so we're, we're very pleased. We see figures from Tacoma Park's history that were part of Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church, our chartering organization, and also just involved in their kids' lives or involved in the community, showing up on those old rosters and photographs and on documents. And we're so grateful to be part of this wonderful community. So thank you for the recognition this year.
Great. Well, thank you. And I have to say personally, I, I very much miss seeing the scouts and being able to participate in all your events and can't wait until we can do that again. So thank you so much. Great. So we will now move on. Our next item is public comments, and we don't have any voting items this evening, so I'll move on into Bay, to general public comments. And I know, ah, here's the email. And first, let's see, we have Peter, who I believe was with us, is our first speaker. He had been with us. Did we lose him?
He is with us.
Okay.
Just. He, he may be having technical issues. I could bring the next person in, perhaps.
Why don't we go to Paul Yubner and Jesse, maybe you could see if you can help him with his technical difficulties? Great.
Just a moment. Oh, there you go. I, the, excuse me, the bottom screen is blocked out. I couldn't turn either on. Good evening, folks. Shall I go now?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul. Yeah.
First of all, God bless Jamie Raskin. He's grievous harm on January 6th, a day after a terrible personal tragedy. He now stands forthright and true against a racist sexist would-be autocrat who threatens our very democracy and the rule of law. He does us all proud and deserves our active support. Tonight, I call on the council and the search committee for a new city manager to do the following. Be open-minded and willing to assist with a new form of hybrid city government, one where our council members exercise greater control over the budget, city staff, subcontractors, the Public Safety Department, and all the levers of government. Select a budget-conscious person with a goal of real fiscal sustainability. What we have lacked for the last five years is balance. The present manager has followed a wish list process for assembling the annual budget. Each department is asked what they want or need, an open-ended process. This city manager proposed over $344,277 for conferences and training in 2021 budget. And there was some $93,375 spent in 2020. Every year of her tenure, she has submitted a budget that greatly exceeded the constant yield property tax rate. Require the new city manager should be a Tacoma Park resident, paying the same taxes as the rest of us do. Require the new manager that her salary, his or her salary package be in balance with the size of our population and revenue, not that of cities four times our population and revenue, nor with the pay of our own county council executive. Once again, look for balance. We are not New York City or the South Side of Chicago. We need an executive that can balance dispersments with revenue without relying on a constant stream of tax increases. Find a city manager who will reduce the number of general government and public safety staff. Why did we need 56 vehicles for 68 employees in the Public Safety Department in 2019, when roughly only 30 were on the street? Find a city manager who will require metrics and accountabilities from city staff, something constantly promised but is yet undelivered. Find a city manager who will require, who, find a city manager capable of modeling for city staff the responsiveness and respect that residents want to see from their government, not the disdainful staff that do what they want regardless of resident or even council member requests. Understand that we need a city manager who can deliver a cost-effective government, where our supervisors, managers, and directors can either deliver a project or the city can subcontract and reduce city staff positions. We should not have to pay for both subcontractors and staff to do the same work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Seth Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart and council members. I'm here tonight to follow up comments I made on January 27th. That date, you had a work session discussion of Councilmember Will Jawandus proposed Montgomery County Zoning Text Amendment 2007, which I'll remind you, as drafted, will allow creation of multi-unit housing duplexes, small apartment buildings, and townhouses within R60 zoned areas within one mile of a metro rail station. That covers my own home and much of, I think probably all of Ward 1, much of other wards. The Planning Board had a hearing on ZTA 2007 on February 4th. I testified then, as I did before, the city council on behalf of Tacoma For All. The Planning Board has released comments to the Montgomery County Council, which has their own hearing tomorrow evening. They voted five nothing on their comments, and they agree in large part with Tacoma For All's point of view. I would say that's that we are really aligned with the ideas of creating economic and racial diversity in Montgomery County's single-family home neighborhoods. So I'm here tonight to ask you again to affirm the amendments that we have suggested and that the Planning Board has also suggested to the zoning text amendment. You could do that by resolution to the county council. I hope that you will schedule a discussion of that and a possible resolution in the future. That includes expanding the scope of the ZTA to our 40 and our 90 zones, covering Purple Line and Planned Bus Rapid Transit and Mark stations. Purple Line, obviously, if we're covering a mile radius of that, that would cover all of Wards 5 and 6, I believe, as well as the substantial portion of Ward 2. It would not cover, however, areas of Ward 3, all of Ward 3 and areas of Ward 2, south of 410 near New Hampshire Avenue, where we would like to promote especially higher-density development in possibly in redevelopable parcels such as the Washington McLachlan Parcel, a mile radius of the BR, of a Purple Line would cover the Washington Animal Hospital campus, I believe. Also, elimination of parking minimums for new housing within a mile of the metro stations. The Planning Board did suggest that the county council consult Tacoma Park by name and other entities that have quoting a vested interest in retaining a level of local control over what's built within their municipalities. So again, I ask, and Tacoma For All asks the city council to affirm support for ZTA 2007 with amendments that include covering other transit hubs, Purple Line, that is, and Bus Rapid Transit. But in particular, also covering the entirety of the city of Tacoma Park in furtherance of our racial and equity goals and economic diversity in our neighborhoods. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to check with the, the city clerk. Do we have, is Peter available? Have we figured out his?
Not yet. I'm trying to contact him.
All right. Why don't we go to Chantel then?
Want to make.
We can't hear you. Now we can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, now we can hear you.
First off, I just want to echo Paul's comments about Representative Raskin. I walk my dog past his house most days and, and see the, the city police car and, and the three or four Capitol Police cars there. He is doing really important work for, for our country and our democracy. I'm actually here today to follow up on the email that I sent about the stormwater management fee. This is obviously an important city priority and something that will only grow in importance with climate change and increased development. And really want to focus on equitable financing and administrative simplicity. We want to make sure that all those contributing to the problem are helping to finance the solution. What does that mean? It means no property owner classes should be exempted, including the city. It also means that we need to look at all the sources of runoff, including our streets and sidewalks. Right now, it appears that only property owners are considered to contribute to runoff, which is obviously not true. And those are shared resources that, that should be a shared burden that we all equally have responsibility for. In terms of administrative simplicity, I just want to make sure that as you design this fee, you know how much it would cost to implement it. There is only $700,000 in the fund. And what percent of that do you actually want to spend to administer the fee and gather the money? You only want to spend 1%, that's $7,000. You only want to spend 5%, that's $35,000. I hope we don't want to spend 10% just to gather the money. That would be $70,000 or maybe a halftime position in the city. So it's a cautionary tale about having a complex approach. And I think although this pacing up on impermeable surfaces seems appealing, it really is complex to administer because you have to calculate the fees, you need to update them over time, you may have to set up an appeal process and have legal consultants and, and other consultants helping you with that and run an appeals process. So I would recommend an alternative approach where you have perhaps a two or three-tier flat rate that's simply tied to the property size. That can address the equity issues if we think that larger properties are actually creating more of the problem, but would also be much cheaper to administer. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. I think I hear.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
It's possible that Peters will try to speak right now.
Okay. Great. Sure.
Peter, go ahead.
I thought we just had him.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm very sorry.
He looks like he's muted.
Yeah, he should be able to unmute himself. I mean, sometimes what happens is staff tries to unmute at the same time. And then he ends up being muted again.
He's unmuted now. Peter, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. You are all set to go.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Thank you, the mayor. Thank you, the council members. I'm here to express gratitude because of the experience I had on the 18th of January 2001. I was at work when they called me, and they told me that my apartment was on fire. And I rushed back at home. When I got there, I met one of your police officers, Officer Chester, I think that is his name, San Chester. And we discussed it bravely. He asked me what happened. I said, told him, I don't know. He said, I don't. And he said, okay, let's go into your apartment. When I got there, everything in the apartment, they were all consumed by fire. I couldn't contain my emotions. Then I was there sobbing. And then he saw the way I was. And he said, Peter, let's go outside. Then we went outside. When we got there, and this officer was very kind. He offered me, if, you know, he said, Peter, can I give you a drink? Can I give you, buy you food? You know, this is a man I doesn't know before. You know, I'm just calling to, I'm just in this meeting to express the gratitude I have for that officer. Another person is Grace. The next morning, Grace called me. And I said, Peter, what happened? And I told her. I said, well, you see, I told her that I slept between, in my car, I was moving from the passenger side to the driver's side. He said, Peter, today, you are not going to sleep in your car again. He said, come to my office right now. Now, when I got to the office, she was already there waiting for me. That day, she helped me arrange for accommodation in the, resident in Besville. And I was there. Since that particular day, this lady has been working both with the landlord with a different organization to make sure that, okay. I'm just looking at the time. I don't know if you guys will give me a little time, please.
Yeah, you can have a few more minutes. Yeah, a few more seconds. Go ahead.
So this lady has been working every time to help me out. One thing she did, I do not really forgot, is that I supposed to check in in the hotel around 6 o'clock. Then I was there a little bit late, then checked in by Sister. Then after checking in, this lady called me like around 6:35. She said, Peter, I want to make sure that you are okay. You were successfully able to check in. I say, yes. He said, well, my intent is that if you were unable to check in, I would come over here. This is now almost 6:45. This lady was still ready to leave her office, come to Besville to help me to check in. If that is not devotion, is, is now, is that not kindness? You know, I've been looking for adjective to qualify, to quantify, both spiritually, but dictionary definition, I could not.
Thank you. We really appreciate you sharing your story tonight and, and the story of our staff.
Yeah. Another person, again, Congressman Terry.
Mm-hmm.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. He came to this apartment to bring me something. He came to this apartment. He brought me chair. He brought me bed. He brought me curtains. He brought, and the one thing he ends up with, he said, Peter, call me if you need something else.
Great. Well, we're very glad.
Yeah. What I'm trying to say is that you.
Okay, I think we, well, we may have lost Peter now, but thank you very much, Peter, for joining the meeting tonight. I'm sure Councilmember Siemens will continue to provide support as well as our city staff. So thank you very much. Next, we have, David Borden is up next for public comments tonight.
Thank you. One of the tragedies of the Trump administration was the sidelighting of the Centers for Disease Control during the pandemic. Partly as a result of this, while most people know to do a few things like wearing masks or washing hands, many are unaware of other important CDC recommendations. These are a few that, in my opinion, do not seem fully and widely understood. CDC recommends people do their shopping using online services with delivery and outdoor pickup, avoiding going inside stores if they can. For takeout, CDC For takeout, CDC recommends paying online or on the phone. CDC recommends doing one's banking online when possible or using drive-through services and ATMs. CDC recommends avoiding indoor spaces that don't offer fresh air from the outdoors. CDC recommends avoiding public or non-central group activities and events. I guess most people probably have heard that. But CDC recommends six feet social distancing be maintained, not only in indoor settings, but outdoors as well. The CDC has important recommendations for apartment buildings and other concrete settings. Residents should wear masks in shared spaces and maintain six feet distancing. Building managers should restrict the number of people who are in an elevator or laundry room or other public area at any given time. Stairways should be designated as unidirectional in buildings where it's possible to do that. CDC recommends that managers communicate with their residents in order to promote these and other precautions. CDC also recommends assessing a building's air systems to have possible increase its circulation of air from the outside. Schools operating in person should pay special attention to that one. With the arrival of more transmissible forms of the virus, the activities we thought were safe may or may not be now. So these and other measures are more important now than ever. They have important corollaries. They imply that stores or other businesses which allow indoor shopping should ask their customers to voluntarily rely on online and outdoor options when they can. They imply not granting oneself exceptions even if they seem small. For example, six feet distancing sometimes means slowing or waiting if someone else has buy a store shelf or produce stand or on a narrow part of a path. Wearing a mask in shared areas means doing so even if just walking in or out of one's building or when inside a store or restaurant's bathroom. In most apartment buildings, six feet distancing for laundry room or elevator means waiting if someone from a different household is already there. Those in our community capable of reaching people, the city, rental managers, businesses, other community institutions should actively communicate and promote these and other recommendations of the CDC during this very dangerous time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Next, we have Byrne Kelly. Mr. Kelly, we can't hear you.
Hi, thank you. Good to see you all. It's been a while and thank you for the hard work that I know you're doing. I participated today in the business meeting on the Rec Center. That was great. Really appreciate the staff and the work there. Couple of things, my concern is about the new manager. I want you to maybe consider a couple of things that has been talked about in the community. One of the big overarching things is Mayor Kate to give you equal powers and equal pay when have a co-management structure changing of our government so that the mayor and the city manager, the city manager attends to the business of the city and the mayor attends to the business of the people. And that way you can share executive responsibilities and make the council pay enough so that it's not basically an economic luxury to be able to be on the city council. So many people who can't is because they work too many jobs and it was a full-time job for the two-year period, which I would like to actually see extended so you guys don't have to rerun every two years. So big overarching stuff there. And I think the city manager should also reside in the city, keep the pay and stuff into the city. The median average is 105K Montgomery County. I think that's a good set point to start both the mayor and the city manager out if we can restart. And that's all I'm going to say about the city manager. Just I want you to consider things like that. People have been asking why we can't do it. I don't know why we can't do it. I think you people can do it. I think you should. And the other thing is stormwater management. You know, my property floods and we have a critical problem. And I believe that the city should look to firms such as Ben Dyer, Paul Woodburn, who does this for other municipalities, to come in and give us some guidance to pay that. That very highly esteemed professional engineer from Ben Dyer, went to U Maryland, grew up here. And he's a great guy, my former boss, and I work with him still. Finally, I think that we need to understand that the projects like the new NDC project and others are only being required to be treating for quality and not quantity. We have a quantity problem. And that means that we would have to capture and attenuate stormwater management wherever we can, including in box culverts, stored culverts under the streets. And we have to look all over the area for where we can attenuate and make stormwater management ponds. If we want to be progressive and we want to be sustainable, this is probably as important, if not more important, than climate change. Because right now, we already all have flooding. I mean, boy, my workload is up because I deal with so many of these people's properties and these people are in distress. And I would like to help the city and I think Paul Chorowski is also going to give a speech on that at some point. But that's all I have for tonight and I thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. I think that is it for our public comments this evening. We will now turn to council comments. Anybody want to start? Oh, wait, did I skip? Wait, I skipped something. Anne's here, sorry. Sorry, Anne, I skipped over you.
I'm enjoying hearing the conversation, so it's all good.
Good. All right, I will turn it over to you now.
I'm sorry, I just accidentally removed her from the meeting. It's not my night here. However, Byrne Kelly is still in the meeting.
Byrne, would you like to give the legislative update?
I wish I could.
At least you didn't give her a cat screen. You didn't make our cat. So we're ahead of the courts in Texas.
I did give you a suggestion.
I'm gonna get a complex.
All right, you're back, Anne.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming.
No.
Wire, I'm sorry. So very quickly, the quick update, we're a third of the way into the Maryland General Assembly session. Virtual lobbying is really hard. Virtual participation by the public is in some ways easier because we get to do it from home or an office instead of traveling to Annapolis. But some things remain the same and Mayor Stewart can attest to that. As she was testifying shortly after midnight early this morning on a bill, the legislature has several dozen bills related to police accountability and reform. And as it is a very high priority for the city of Tacoma Park, the mayor did weigh in last night, this morning on bills related to public access to information when there are investigations into police activity and as well as supporting the repeal of the law enforcement officer's Bill of Rights. That is going to be a very intense topic. I think the Senate Committee thought it would be just this week. I'm sure they realized it would take more than a week. But they've been spending a lot of time this week in work groups and they will continue that and try to shape the bills. The House still has more bills to hear next week. And they heard yesterday as well, the proposal by the Speaker and the work group that the House had developed. There are just very many versions of a lot of the same kinds of topics. And they're going to be working very hard. So the city has made, again, its position very clear on a couple of the main issues. The legislature has also been in the process this week of overriding a number of vetoes that the governor made after last session. The House has done not all of the vetoes. They've done a lot of vetoes. They'll be coming back. They go back in on Friday. And the Senate goes in tomorrow or vice versa. I can't remember. But you know, certainly one of the very big vetoes was to the Kerwin bill, the blueprint for Maryland's future, the public education funding. The House has overridden that veto. So now that goes to the Senate to do the same. Lots of other things going on. Those are the highlights, I think, right now for the city.
Great. Thank you so much, Anne, and thank you for all the support last night. So just so you all know, the hearing actually started at 1:30 in the afternoon. And so, Anne, I were texting back and forth when I had to do other things and couldn't be monitoring it. And then finally, I think it was 12:15 last night, I got to give it to money. So.
That's a quick question. Anne, is there any update on the plastic bag ban that Senator Augustine is sponsoring?
I will find out. It has not been on a voting list yet. So thank you for raising that. I will ask him first thing tomorrow. You know, if he's expecting that to move forward.
Yeah, thank you.
And with what amendments and things like that.
Okay, I know he's not proposing any amendments, but I'd like.
If there are any amendments, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Perfect. All right. Well, thank you very much, Anne. And now we will move to council comments. Anyone want to kick us off? All right. Oh, now you're all doing it. Okay, Councilwoman Kostic.
Everyone, just a couple of quick updates. I am a member of the National League of Cities Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee. And we had a meeting today to kind of kick off for this upcoming year. And I just wanted to give a recap of a couple of items from that. The first is that we are going to be focusing at the federal level on a number of issues that are of great importance to the city. And I wanted to draw attention to those. Those are things that are kind of the committee's top priorities this year. And they are workforce development, comprehensive immigration reform, COVID health disparities, mental health and substance abuse, and racism as a public health crisis. So I'm hopeful that we'll have some useful updates and can learn from other cities around the country and also that we'll be able to do some important advocacy at the federal level for those things. I also want to flag for people that we got information from NLC that there is text from the House Committee on Financial Services and the House Oversight and Reform Committee for a state and local emergency relief legislation. And NLC is supportive of the legislation and is going to be putting out a statement. And they're asking people to help uplift that statement and share it widely. So that should be available soon. And then finally, I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow is the last day of Transpo Bingo, which is a DC, primarily DC, but also sort of DC area. So Marylanders are welcome to participate as well. Online social media initiative to get people to focus on active transit rather than driving, instead of driving, walking, biking, taking public transit. And there's a fun bingo card that you can fill out and post on Twitter. I've been participating and it's been a lot of fun. And there are some fun updates from others as they've been going through the process. So you still have the rest of today and tomorrow. If you want to participate, you are welcome to do so. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kovar.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. Just a few quick things I wanted to mention. One, people are aware, especially those in North Tacoma anyway, that the SSI Park, which is the park that lies between Philadelphia Avenue and Boston Avenue, not that far from Montgomery College's campus. And there's a major effort underway to renovate that park. And a lot of that work won't happen until summer or later. But one initial piece that I've mentioned looks like, according to city staff, Ian Chamberlain mentioned this to me, as did the affected, most closely affected homeowner, the retaining wall by the adjacent to the first private residence on Boston Avenue against the park. The work's going to start on that perhaps as soon as February 15th. And that's going to involve several week period and may involve at least during the day when the work is being done, some closure of the sidewalk or some partial blockage of the street in that area. So it's just something for people living in that area on Boston Avenue to be aware. I've done various of the food distribution efforts recently. I've certainly seen the mayor at a couple of them and others as well. And a lot of people from Ward 1 and elsewhere in the city have helped. And just to mention a few that I've been part of, our colleague Terry Siemens organized some food deliveries at the Franklin Building on Maple Avenue. And then the Shepherds of Zion Ministries International that does it every two weeks at Tacoma Park Elementary School and also Small Things Matter. And really, why I'm saying this is not about my participation, but just the need is just really great. Others, really, not great, but really grave. And many of my colleagues have mentioned that also, the lines just seem to go on forever. And I was on, you know, 50-pound potato bag duty at Tacoma Park Elementary School. And I kind of never even looked up and saw the cars for four hours because I was just doing that part, but they were just nonstop. So the need is really great. And again, I hope we'll be able to look into further steps that we can take on that. A few other things. And this is an abbreviation section here. So through the Council of Governments, Greater Washington Council of Governments on the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Committee, also known as MWAC. And there is connected to that an advisory committee called the Air Climate Public Advisory Committee. They're looking for members. It's not a full-time position. It's an advisory committee looking specifically for members from Maryland. This is people with an environmental background, ideally people who work in the field and specifically who work in air quality issues. And so if you might be interested, contact me. So this is COG and then it's MWAC and then it's ACPA. You can keep all that straight. Contact me and I can tell you when I. We've got more snow coming. I've appreciated the snow removal that the staff has been able to do so far. The storms haven't been huge. This one, we don't know about, but looking forward to the continued excellent support that we get from public works on that. One question, this is just something that maybe staff can get back to me on a resident mentioned that it appears that the parking permit requirement for residents in ADUs, accessory dwelling units, may have changed. And even if someone is here for a shorter term period, unless they have their driver's license actually shows that address, they may not be able to get a parking permit. So I don't know if that's been a change, but maybe that could just be checked on. Two other things and then I'll stop. I mentioned this to staff and the police chief had recently circulated some information on internal affairs investigations. And it was an initial listing of the cases, just some of the data on it. I think for me and maybe others on the council residents as well, we're interested in getting more details. And I understand that some things connected to personnel obviously can't be fully shared, but we could get more information in what's in that initial write-up. And so look forward to having that happen, you know, at an upcoming council meeting. And then just very last thing, and I apologize for going on so long. Several of our speakers mentioned Congressman Raskin and the work that he's doing. And not to pile on in the praise, but if you sort of were imagining the ideal lead manager for an impeachment trial and you have someone who's incredibly articulate and also a true progressive, but just, oh, by the way, he's a constitutional law professor too. He's kind of the perfect person for it. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of stress, but he's doing a great job. And I just want to say, as several of the residents did, that I think we're all very proud and pleased and honored to be represented by him and appreciate the work he's doing. Thank you.
Great. Councilman Circe.
Great. I'm going to be pretty short. Want to thank the residents that came out to the city manager community meeting feedback opportunity. It was a very interesting evening. It feels like it was many moons ago, but it wasn't. So definitely want to thank the residents that came out and those that participated in my particular focus group. It was great to have a chance to listen and learn and hear from you all on, you know, aspects that you all value in our next city managers. So thank you all for that. Just as a quick plug, there's also a survey that's on our website. Want to encourage folks to check that out and fill it out. Another quick reminder, I want to thank all of those that have applied for the Public Safety Task Force. We've gotten a number of folks who've applied. And so just want to thank everyone for taking time out. As the mayor mentioned, we will be. As the mayor mentioned, we will be discussing criteria and ultimate selection. And definitely look forward to having conversations with members of the council in terms of aspects of selection. So thank you, everyone that has applied. Another quick update. So we heard back from Tammy, big shout out to Tammy Watkins from Pepco regarding the double poles that's along Carroll Avenue. Yes, we have a slated date for a number of the double poles. They might get removed by the end of March. So we did receive a list. I forwarded that list to our Director of Public Works. I'll believe it when I see it, but having a date and actual pole numbers is awesome. So definitely will keep everyone posted. And that includes not just those places where we have double poles, but also places where Pepco contractors might have left debris of poles along Carroll Avenue between Wildwood and, and I believe that's Merrimack. There's like large logs that used to be utility poles. It's just in the green area. So that also includes the removal of those pieces. So fingers crossed, at the end of March, we'll start to see some progress in getting those double poles taken up. And that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
First thing I want people to know is that American Diversity Group is hosting a Grab and Go from two to four PM in Silver Spring. It will be located at one two two one zero Plum Orchard Drive, Suite 214. So you can get vegetables and other food for your family. All you have to do is show up, pop your trunk, put the food in the back of your trunk, and you drive away. I would ask that staff follow up with the police department. I've gotten a couple of reports of vehicles being broken into on Roanoke between Hudson and Kennebec. This latest attempt, the suspects went into the back car pad of a property to try to access it. So if the police department can put out some type of additional patrols in that area in the evenings, that would be great. And then finally, you know, I hope that we can, as a council, come up with some idea to support additional food distributions in the city. I mean, right now, I'm doing it every other week in Ward Five, and it's just still not enough. There are people that are hurting, and we got to figure a systematic approach to getting to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Kovar's words earlier about the food need. I really want to thank Councilmember Kovar and Mayor Stewart for helping with the Franklin Department Distribution. Especially this last month and this month, they've had one elevator broken. And there's quite a line of people waiting for the elevators. And when you're trying to maintain social distancing, you can only get, you know, maybe two people in an elevator at a time. Mayor Stewart put in extra effort this week by carrying boxes up three flights of stairs so that she didn't have to wait for the elevator. So that things can get done. So we're thinking about sending her a bill because if she'd gone to Gold's Gym, it would have cost her money for that much exercise.
I just waited for the elevator.
No, but I really want to highlight all the council and make sure the community understands that, you know, when you're on the city council, there's a lot of work to do. But everyone on this council has put in extra work to help the community to meet the food need. And as Mr. Kovar said, it's, we're not doing the entire job we need to be doing at this point. And so I implore any community members who are interested in trying to help their fellow residents through this period and help with the, with food. You know, we have some great organizations here with Small Things Matter and the Zion Church that Mr. Kovar mentioned. But there is space for additional organizations. If you want to bring a group of people together to serve, we can tell you where this, where more service is needed. And, and if you just want to, you or, you know, one of your family members want to help out, contact any of your, contact your council member or the mayor. And I'm sure they can direct you to somebody who could really benefit from your service. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeBala.
Calling up the rear here. I guess Board Two is on the every other week food plan for next week. So I don't have anything to say about food other than next week. I did want to say, remind people that there is a meeting on February eighteenth, Thursday, February eighteenth, from six to seven, specifically about the bike way along New Hampshire Avenue. Even more specifically, Section B, which is the section from Poplar to Auburn. So we've seen the preliminary designs for the part up New Hampshire closer to the crossroads. And then this is the next section down. So for people who are interested in biking or for people who live onward near that stretch in New Hampshire, this is your chance to see the plans, ask questions, weigh in. Thursday, February eighteen, six to seven. You need to sign up for the Zoom link first in order to join. Thank you. That's it.
Great. I have a couple of things. Today was the Council of Governments Board Meeting. And as I've mentioned to folks, I am serving as the vice chair this year. Two things, just to keep everyone informed. The board, the COG Board, did send a letter to Speaker Pelosi and Majority Leader Schumer urging the federal government to reauthorize and increase its existing funding commitment to Metro in the amount of at least $2 billion over the next 10 years. So that letter went out today on behalf of the board. The other thing we did get an update today from someone from Homeland Security talking to us about the insurrection on January sixth. We'll have a number of other updates on this. But one of the things that really did strike me, and I think, I hope the COG Board takes this up more in the next couple of years, was one thing he said was that extreme right-wing extremists are entering the mainstream and that we need to do at all levels of government really work on fighting back against extremists. And so that was just, it was very sobering update today. And I wanted to share that with everyone. Some other things. It was a lot of food distribution this week. The need is very great. And just want to reiterate my colleague's call for any volunteers, folks who want to help out, even, you know, like even an hour on a Saturday or a Monday is just so helpful because the need is so great. And also, I am, I'm not really participating as much as Councilwoman Kostic in the transportation bingo this year, but I did help pick up trash with the ANC's. Erin Palmer and Evan Yeats at the Metro on Sunday morning. So we were able to do that. And so hopefully, we'll be able to do soon more events cross jurisdictional, particularly with those two ANC's. They're very active and love to partner with them more. I guess, let's see, I think we covered everything else. Oh, the last thing I wanted to mention was, and I didn't see this in the city manager comments, but I wanted people to know about the bus shelters that are up for Black History Month around the city. And I don't know of where each of them are, because that was a question I had today. But I did see some of them up with information and posters on Black Americans in celebration of Black History Month. So just wanted to call attention to that so people knew. That was one of the things the city is doing this month. And I think that's, I'll save the other stuff for when we talk about the city manager search, but I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I was, I was actually going to do something about the bus shelters, but I was going to do that next week. But I will also, I'll see if we can send out something that has a map of the different locations. I think that'd be useful. To celebrate Black History Month, I just wanted to say first, happy birthday to Frederick Douglass. Been following, I lived in Rochester for years, but would always learned about Frederick Douglass. He was born in February of eighteen eighteen in Talbot County, Maryland. He chose to celebrate his birthday on February fourteenth. And so that's something that in my family, we learned long, very long time ago that Valentine's Day was Frederick Douglass's birthday. I wanted to recount that I remember of February many years ago, when my brother Martin was in about second grade in Arlington, Virginia, his teacher asked the class, what important Americans have birthdays in February? And my brother's hand shot up. He said Frederick Douglass. The teacher was dismayed that he did not say George Washington or Abraham Lincoln, and she reported that back to my parents, who promptly were very happy with my brother. Just one of those things that helps me always remember about when Frederick Douglass's birthday is. And I do urge people, when the National Park Service's sites open up again, visit Cedar Hill in DC. It's a wonderful museum for Frederick Douglass. You get to see his house and the view from there spectacular in DC. So it's very much worth a visit. Now onto COVID-19 related information. We have the same information in my report to contact and look at the online information from Montgomery County and Maryland about the vaccines. Montgomery County has a phone number, two four zero seven 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 two nine eight two. I believe it's in, it's staffed with different languages, but certainly English and Spanish. If you're not going online, you can call that number to register for the county site. On the Maryland site, there's multiple places to sign up for vaccines. The information differs by site. The registration availability changes day to day, hour to hour, and it's every person for themselves. It is lousy. I'm hoping that if there are neighbors can help sign up their neighbors when it's possible. And I'm hoping with the federal rollout of vaccines, there can be some centralization of the signup. I also really want to keep working to have the vaccines going to apartment buildings, et cetera. So bring the vaccines to the people as opposed to having this craziness with online registrations. In the meantime, keep wearing your mask. We're going to need to wear them for a long time. They're even suggesting double masking. Whatever's nice and tight around your face is the right thing to do. We've had COVID-19 testing at the rec center on Wednesdays and Saturdays for some time. The Wednesdays are stopping. They're using their staff to do vaccinations. So it looks like the vaccinations have stopped as of, well, they were going to have it today. They didn't have it today. I don't think it's going back on Wednesday. So in the future, always make sure you contact the Montgomery County website to check the availability of testing. But it will continue as far as we can tell on Saturdays for some time. The, wanted to just kind of note that we now have thirty-three residents documented in the zip code of twenty nineteen who have died from COVID. It's sobering. And so I, I just wanted to think of their memories this holiday of Valentine's Day and think about all of the, all of the pain that this pandemic has brought to us and how we have to work together. A number of you talked about food need. We're doing a number of things internally and staff to deal with foods. And hopefully, we'll be able to roll some of that out and share that with you. But one of the exciting things is we have a Feed the Fridge now available at the rec center, outside of the rec center. There's a grand opening at maybe two weeks from now. I thought it was next week, but it looks like it's two weeks from now. But the fridge is there. The food is there. If somebody needs a meal, they go over and they get the food that they want from the fridge. So please let people know if they need food someday. It's free. You just take the food. For those who don't need the free meal, you can give donations to the restaurants that are making these meals and feeding the fridge. So I have the links on my city manager reports, or you can just Google Feed the Fridge, and you'll get it. It's a really nice opportunity for Tacoma Park to partner with the groups that are doing this. Just to note, and I think somebody else mentioned, we do have more winter weather. It seems very spotty. We'll not see what happens over the next two days. At this point, we don't anticipate a major change to the collections of trash recycling and food waste. I will let you know if we do. We've got guys working overnight again and trying to spread things out. So I'm really proud of the staff to keep things going, even though it doesn't quite ever feel like a storm. It's just enough to keep us, you know, doing the work to keep us safe. I'd also like to, I was asked to provide more information about what's going on with the budget process. So I just want to flesh that out a little bit for folks. While the city council and the residents won't really be seeing the proposed city budget until the first week of April, city staff is working very hard on it right now. And so we have, we are projecting how services will be provided as vaccinations allow for greater in-person classes and assistance. And we're preparing to have the documents, infographics, and charts that meet our budget goals of transparency and clear communication. As we've heard from ourselves and the council and the residents, we want to make those, we want to make it easy to read the budget and understand the budget and have the columns that people are interested in. Right now, meetings are happening with department heads and with the budget, human resources, and city management staff. The purpose of these meetings is to identify major budget issues for the department, determine the impact of the pandemic on service delivery as well as projected costs and revenues. And then they review the timeline for entry of their numbers into the budget system. Often, there are services or issues that cross departmental lines that require coordination or approaches from which multiple staff units can benefit. That's shared technology. It's important to note that one year ago, neither the deputy city manager nor the finance department's budget and accounting manager were on staff yet when they were preparing the budget. And this is only the second time Tracy Smith, their human resources manager, has been involved in the budget. And last year was crazy because it was as we were shutting down for the pandemic. So right now, we're all trying to be on the same page about how to move forward with the budget process. It's actually going well. I appreciate the hard work. Our staff are to have the first round of proposed capital budget worksheets prepared by February nineteenth. Their proposed operating budget numbers entered in the budget software by February twenty-sixth. Then we have meetings to go over that, change the numbers, adjust them with the revenue estimates that are coming in, as well as have conversations with council members as we refine the proposed budget. By mid-March, I will have determined what major components will be included in the proposed budget and what the property tax rate will be to be advertised. And I'm, one of the things that my resident has asked me to emphasize every year is that because Maryland law requires the, that you, that you can only decrease the tax rate at the time of adoption, you can't increase it. The tax rate that I will be proposing must be high enough to accommodate any council additions or any unanticipated reductions of revenue or increases of expenditures that happen during the budget consideration. or increases of expenditures that happen during the budget consideration process. So that's why my proposed tax rate is almost always higher than gets adopted. Probably is always higher than gets adopted, but it's to provide that space during the budget consideration process before the actual budget, um, before the council actually chooses a property tax rate. So I just wanna remind people that it's not necessarily because I want a high tax rate. It's because I'm providing that space, uh, for flexibility as going through the budget process. Uh, my final note is that, um, as the mayor mentioned, our city offices are closed, um, on Sunday and Monday. But obviously our police department is always open, uh, for emergency services. I see a hand up with Tracy. Tracy, did you need to ask me something?
I do not. Sorry. That's a mistake.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if I didn't say something wrong. Um, I will get back. Um, I know I had a question from, um, council member Kovar, and, uh, I'll get back to you with the answer.
And two things I forgot, as I was meant, as we were talking about the, um, food distribution. It, we need volunteers, and if there is anyone who needs food, they should also contact us as well.
That's right.
So, um, and then I completely forgot, I had on my list to thank the city clerk and city TV. Um, as people will notice, we have the closed captioning now available and, um, the live transcript. We have been working on that. Um, there are a number of residents in our community who are hard of hearing or deaf, who we've been, um, talking to about how to, um, make our meetings more accessible. Um, and so we're, we're moving in that, um, direction. I know city TV has been working on that, um, as well. So I just wanna say thank you so much, um, for having that. And we welcome feedback, um, as, as we're doing this. Um, and, um, thank you for making that available. All right. So we will now move on to our work session. We're joined, um, this evening by, uh, tough Catherine Tuck Parish. I think I saw her here. I don't know Catherine, if you feel like turning on your video so, uh, we can introduce you. We, hi, thanks for joining us this evening. Catherine is who, uh, we have hired in the city to help us with our city manager search that we have gotten underway. And we're also joined by our HR director, Tracy Smith. So, um, I'm just gonna run through a couple of the things, um, review what we've been doing. And, uh, it just sort of where, where we're kind of going with this and then open it up for, um, a discussion for council this evening. So we hired Catherine, uh, who was helping us with the search. Uh, that was our first step. Our second step is that we, um, had our community conversation on last Thursday night, as was mentioned. I think it was, it was very successful, even though we were, um, Zoom bombed unfortunately. But thankfully, most people were able to get back on. Um, and we had over two dozen, um, people. We broke up into small groups, uh, to answer questions. There, there, I think there were three or four questions we answered about attributes people wanna see in the next city manager, where we wanna see the city in the next couple of years and how the city manager, um, can help, the next city manager can help us get there. Um, and so we, we had the notes from, um, that meeting, um, that we've shared, um, with Catherine and will help inform us as we move forward in this process. And, um, the feedback I received from residents who participated in it was that they very much appreciated doing the small group, um, and the breakouts. So I do think that is something we want, may wanna consider for other things in the future, though, hopefully we will not be Zoom bombed in the future. The other thing we do have is councilwoman seriously mentioned is the survey is up and running, um, on the city website. As of this afternoon, we had about a hundred and fifty responses. Um, we'd like to get some more. We are, uh, translating the survey into, um, Amharic, Spanish and French. And I believe that should be ready in the next couple of days to send out to residents who would like to do it in those languages. In addition, we have two stakeholder focus groups that are coming up hopefully in late February. And Councilman Kostick and Kovar are taking the lead on all of that. So our goal is to post the position, um, by the end of February, to leave the position, um, open for applicants until early April. Um, and then, um, by late April, early May, start interviewing. And so that's just sort of a big picture overview of the process. And today's work session, uh, we thought one of our goals would be, um, one, to introduce everyone to Catherine. So, uh, they got to meet her and also if, uh, council members would like to ask any questions or raise any points, uh, particularly reflecting on the community conversation we had last week. Um, and if there are any, um, either attributes or things that, that you believe we need, need to stress as we're looking forward a new city manager. Um, so, um, I don't know if anyone would like to start? Uh, Councilman DeBala.
Were you going to introduce Catherine before you get going with the council comments?
Well, Catherine, you say, I, I think I did, but yeah, Catherine, do you wanna say?
I'm just, um, grateful to be here. I'm, I'm really enjoying working with you all so far and being on this journey with you. I'm very much appreciative of the comments that, um, I've heard about from the community conversation and the survey. That information is extremely helpful to me and will be to those that participate in the process. And I'm looking forward to hearing your takeaways from that and anything else tonight.
Great. Councilman DeBala.
Yeah, uh, two things, if I can remember them, um, the, that struck me about the, the meeting, the meeting last week and also as I've been thinking and talking with people about this, um, the notion of engaging residents. And, and what are the skills needed to do that in a variety of ways to meet a variety of residents in where, in whatever place in life they're at, was something that came through loud and clear to me in the, in the work group that I was in and in conversations I've had with residents. I was also struck by one person's comment, and this was only one person's comment, but it rang true to me that, um, that the city manager, uh, should look like Tacoma Park, not Birkenstock hip, hip, uh, Birkenstocks and Birkenstock sandals, but that the, the, the notion of, of a, as we have a police chief who's got, um, a different background from some more conventional police chiefs in the, in the past, that we, that we really look to someone who can either literally represent or who can understand and communicate with people from all different walks of life. That struck me as really pretty, pretty, um, important. Besides the obvious skills of, you know, financial management and all the other things that we talked about. So I, that was the one takeaway for me, I think.
Great. Um, Councilwoman Circe.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm going to piggyback off of councilmember DeBala. You know, community engagement was a, a big theme in, um, the group that I was a part of as well. Another point that people brought up was, you know, making sure that we pick someone who has the ability to walk, to work across jurisdictional lines. Because of the nature of our city, that borders so many different areas. Someone who maybe has that experience of being able to walk across, to deal with multiple jurisdictions that may be just very different, um, in terms of their ideals and, and things like that, or systems in place. There was a desire to make sure that, um, you could sort of like someone that can think strategically about the big ticket issues, um, but also, um, knows how to, um, have some small victories as well. So kind of knowing how to deal with the big stuff and really identify the little things that could, could mean a, a great deal to folks. And another point that people raised was, you know, keeping in mind that this person will also be responsible for leading staff. So, you know, like how effective would they be at, um, really trying, really being able to communicate, um, council priorities to staff in a, in a real way and how that kind of trickle down would happen, um, and making sure that they're able to motivate, motivate staff as well. So as councilmember DeBala said, there, there were a lot of like, you know, city priority versus, you know, skill sets and making sure that there's a good mix between the hard skills and the soft skills. But those were just a few things that I thought were really interesting, um, and unique about the city, you know, in terms of the number of jurisdictions and, you know, understanding that we, we tend to hit well above our weight class. So you'll focus a lot on the big things, but also trying to figure out how to, how to be successful at implementing and communication with staff.
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Councilwoman Circe said, that, um, I think that was an excellent point that was brought up in the groups and, um, is something that, you know, during COVID, um, in particular, has really been highlighted, the importance, like the work that we're doing right now, that our city manager is doing with the city managers of Gaithersburg and Rockville and working at the county level. You know, it's always been important, but I think under COVID, working across jurisdiction has, um, been heightened even more, um, for that. And I, I think where we're situated in Tacoma Park, that's, it is very important to be able to do that. So, great. Um, Councilman Kostick, I think is next.
Thank you. Um, I, I think this is a really good thing, but a lot of what's been mentioned already was mentioned in my group as well. So I think there is a lot of, um, commonality in terms of what people, um, are thinking and, and the values that we hold in Tacoma Park. I also just wanted to reiterate the point, um, about, uh, a city manager who can think big picture. I can look at those big projects and also can do that every day and the small, um, small efforts and small wins, because that's a big part of, um, of what makes the city run every day. It's not always the flashy stuff. Um, and we had a, a useful discussion in our, um, small group last week about that. We also talked a lot about communication and accessibility and the city manager as being someone who, you know, residents know and see out in the community, um, obviously more, uh, post-COVID than right now. But that, that was very important to people. And that, um, also building on, um, councilmembers Circe and the mayor's, um, comments about work across jurisdictions, uh, that, that someone coming in can really be quick to build relationships and quick to develop those connections with outside groups, um, and other leaders and staff members in other jurisdictions, because that is really essential to getting the work done that happens in the city. Um, and then the two other things I heard, uh, which I think are really important, were, uh, experience with multi-year projects and, um, development projects and, and construction projects. Since we are looking at, um, a number of those, including the library, the rec center, and many of the, the projects, um, happening on, on private property as well. And then also, uh, listening, the ability to listen early on in the process and to build in community feedback was another important point that, um, residents made in our discussion and, um, making sure that, uh, the, the city manager with, and the council as well, were providing opportunities to, um, hear from the community, um, not so far down the line in a, um, in a project that it's not possible to kind of make changes, but, but that really, the, that process is built into the full scope of the project. And I, I thought it was really a great opportunity overall to talk with residents and kind of brainstorm. And I just wanna thank everyone who participated in the, um, community conversation.
Great. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you. Um, I thought the conversation was great and the breaking up into small groups really seemed to work well because it meant that unlike in some of these bigger meetings, people got to speak more than once. And so I think in that sense, it felt more like a, a real exchange of views. I don't wanna mention a, a lot of specific, um, traits and issues because I think my colleagues have covered that pretty well. Just a handful of things I wanted to say. One, there was talk about Tacoma Park values and, you know, people may vary a little bit in what they think about, what they think that means, but I do recall with the police chief's search that after getting a lot of feedback, the council spent quite a bit of time trying to ensure that the announcement of the job, um, which is sent out to attract people to apply, really had a lot of what we might consider to be, um, our Tacoma Park values in there. And I think that was one of the things that our chief, I shouldn't really call him a new chief anymore since he's probably been here like three years, but that made him wanna apply. So it's not just about us saying, who, who can we get? Is what's really gonna attract some interesting people to come to us? I think spending a lot of time figuring out how to ensure that the values that we care about are, are in that announcement is one thing we wanna do. And then two other things that, that were brought up that, and maybe my colleagues didn't mention, I'm not sure. One was, um, having a flexibility and a, and an ability to change. And so if we're working on something for one initiative or a program or a project or whatever it is, and then new information comes in or situation, uh, considerations that are outside of our control come into play and it becomes necessary to make a pivot of some sort, having that ability. And then, um, and this may relate more to the interview phase of the process when there's a smaller number of applicants, but, um, thinking about some non-traditional kinds of questions to ask that might elicit some interesting responses that go beyond to, well, tell us what, you know, what you think about budgeting. And, and those things are obviously important also, but maybe asking, uh, the candidates to explain to us an example where they had some sort of, um, moral quandary that they had to deal with affecting the city and how they dealt with it, kind of an open-ended kind of thing that might, in addition to wanting to make sure they know how to, uh, meet the accounting standards in the budget, that might bring in some additional information. So it's just fodder for what we might do later in the process. Thanks.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, uh, you know, most of, uh, what I heard in the meeting was, uh, has been covered by other councilmembers tonight. So I'm not gonna go into that again. Um, just a couple of things that I, I'm not sure were said already. Uh, and one, uh, thing that I heard was there was some discussion of, um, kind of the role of the city council and the role of the city manager and making sure that, um, that the city manager understands this form of government and that, uh, this, uh, council is a policy body and the, uh, the city manager is more of an operational body. And, uh, that, uh, we keep those, uh, those roles, uh, separate as is appropriate. And then the other thing was, uh, there was some discussion of, um, the city manager, being able to and willing to actually manage the police, uh, department. There was a perception, and not with the, our current city manager, but that in the past, uh, some city managers seem to be reluctant to, uh, manage the, uh, the, the police department in the same way that they manage other departments, that they seem to be, I don't know if the word would be intimidated or, uh, reluctant to, um, give the same kind of direction to the police chiefs in the past. And those are the only two things I think hadn't been discussed already. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Um, Councilman DeBala, did you have a, an additional thought? I think the only other thing I will add that I just, um, I think is, is in some of what, uh, Councilman Kostick and Circe said, but is, um, also, um, you know, what I heard too from some folks, um, and believe myself is that, um, the city of Tacoma Park is one of our values. One of the things we're known for is doing innovative things, is trying, uh, new things, uh, new solutions to, um, problems, whether it's things like climate change, reimagining public safety, or, um, you know, as, uh, you know, working on racial equity early on. Thanks to some of the early work of councilmember Smith, the doing that stuff. You know, someone who is willing to kind of take on, um, sometimes, uh, to the tough challenges of the day when there's not, um, a lot of, um, I don't know, there's not a handbook, um, you know, to say like, okay, here's how you do this. a lot of, I don't know, there's not a handbook, you know, to say like, okay, here's how you do this. And who's willing to do that, I think is also something that we've done in the city before and having a city manager who's who's game for that and who is open to do that work and work with the council on it and residents is also very important. Great. Anything else that council would like to raise or Catherine? Or Tracy, you were there as well in the meeting on Thursday. Do you have any questions for council as you're taking all this in and thinking about the announcement and the brochure that will go out?
I think you all have provided through this this discussion, through the community conversations and the survey, some really important aspects of what is unique about Tacoma Park and what its residents would like to see, and that's very helpful. I also think that the conversation about goals and priorities that you all have will help complete the picture for for the city manager and will be helpful to candidates. So I am looking forward to the focus groups and continued input. And will be developing a brochure that tries to capture the best and the the best of the thoughts, not that some thoughts are better than others, but the most of them in there. Also wanting to make sure you all understand that only human beings will apply for this job. I mean, it is, it is very important that the that the brochure articulates kind of the ideal and what you really would like. And it does communicate what's important to you all as you represent your residents. That's very important. When when you meet candidates, they will be good at some things and not as good at other things, and they will have had some experiences that will be helpful and maybe they haven't encountered some other things and you all will have to assess as a body, you know, what you think are the best of those. But I think this has been very helpful to me and I know will be very helpful to the candidates. I will be encouraging them to watch all these different meetings and hear the discussions themselves. I think that's very valuable as well.
Great. I do see, I don't know if some of these hands are old or new, so I think Councilwoman DeBala, you have something new and I, hands up, okay. So if people don't have anything, just take their hands down, but I have Councilwoman DeBala and Kostick.
Just wanting to hear again when the, when people must finish the survey by. What's the deadline on this survey?
So we don't, we haven't really set a deadline for the survey. We were a bit delayed in getting the translations, unfortunately. And if the rest of council agrees with me, I would say that we we ran some of the numbers today to that we provided to you earlier. I sent those to Catherine as well, so that they could inform our conversation tonight as well as the brochure she's writing. But I think the information that we are gathering from the survey and can get through other avenues will be beneficial throughout this process. So I don't see any need right now to close the survey right away. I think we should encourage people to continue filling it out. And particularly when we get the translations, making sure that those members of our community who need that in the various languages have opportunity and don't feel rushed to fill it out. And so, and we can always, you know, I'm working with Donna Wright on the city staff. And she said she's more than happy to, you know, send us numbers like every other day or something. So imagine this is just a, you know, a rolling sample that will get numbers. But if other people agree with me, I would propose that's how we approach it. Okay, seeing nods, no objections. Councilman Kostick, did you have something else or was that the same thing? Okay, you're good. Great. All right. Well, we will continue to have these updates. And I encourage members of the public, if they, some of them came this evening and offered public comments. Please fill out the survey, but as with any of the issues we discuss on the city council or things that are going on in the city, we're available, all of us are available by email, phone, and to hold other meetings and things. So thank you, Catherine, for joining us this evening. We appreciate it and we continue, we look forward to continue working with you. And thank you, Tracy, for your support as well. All right, we will move on to our next work session. Where we're going to dig into stormwater management now. And so I think we're going to turn over to our head of public works.
Good evening. Thanks. Appreciate being here to talk on this subject this evening. I was just recalling, this is actually, will be the sixth time. We've talked about this since January 2019. So I know there's a bit of forgetfulness or repetition doesn't always stick in our heads, but at any rate, this is a topic that we've reviewed and and thought about. And so I'm hoping we can focus the conversation tonight on some specific decision points for your public hearing and then also hear from you all what else you need to find out or have available or have staff to consider so that we can wrap this up. One of the critical points that we have is that we are looking at preparing the FY22 budget, and so this is a critical piece of that. Currently, as you all know, our stormwater fee, which has been in place since 1996, is based on a flat rate for single-family properties. So all single-family properties, regardless of the amount of impervious area on their lots, pay the same amount, the $92 currently. It started early on as $24 and has worked its way up to 92 for the past few years. The proposal that our consultants and city staff have in front of you now is for the council to consider changing the fee structure to a tiered structure as opposed to the flat rate. One of the reasons that that proposal came out is because of the wide variety of difference in impervious area in our single-family properties. Early on in the late 90s, when the evaluation was done, there was much more assumption about consistency in impervious area because we were really just looking at building footprint. Now that we have increased technology that uses LiDAR, light penetrating radar, GIS, property tax records, we can really focus in and hone down on actual impervious area per lot. So it turns out that our single-family properties range from square footage of impervious area of 500 to over 10,000. So it's quite a wide range. And so the issue then comes as to whether or not we should pursue a fee structure that reflects actual impervious area. And if that would not be a more equitable approach for those properties that have significant impervious areas to contribute more towards a stormwater fee. So that's kind of what we're looking at tonight. We have the analysis, of course, that was done by Black and Beach. We all had a report from them at a work session in January of 2019. Myself have presented updates on that or work sessions about that last year. There has been a question raised about the definition of impervious area, so we can get to that tonight. I think Deputy City Manager Jessica Clark has some PowerPoint slides that we can use so we can clarify that definition. The definition we are using is actually the definition established by the state of Maryland and currently in place by Montgomery County. So it's not something we've created uniquely here, but it is it is the standard definition relative to these types of considerations, not only in our area, but around the country. I've also had a few questions about how the analysis was done. So just wanted to say briefly that the Black and Beach study was able to tap into kind of the latest technology. As you may recall, in the tree canopy discussions that we had last year, we used LiDAR to show our tree canopy cover. LiDAR was also used by Black and Beach as well as county property tax records and GIS mapping to determine building footprint, walkways, driveways, parking pads within private property. So that analysis used that that technology. Of course, this is all computer-driven and, you know, they aren't perfect. So there is always the possibility that there are errors and calculations. The assumption has been all along that should the city proceed with a tiered structure versus a flat rate, that there would be, as there is now, an appeal process. Currently, the folks that would tend to appeal in the past, because would be the commercial or industrial or institutional properties, because they're the ones currently charged by actual impervious area. We've had very few appeals of that. But if we were to shift to a tiered structure, we'd have to set up an appeal process as well as a process to evaluate improvements that property owners have made on their properties to treat stormwater and enable infiltration and look at some kind of credit programs for those folks that have not done that through the permit process with the city, but have actually just independently gone ahead and made those improvements to try to manage stormwater in their property. So we don't have the details of that tonight, but I just want to suffice it to say that there's a wide understanding that should a tiered structure be established, there'd be the assumption that there would be an appeal process and a review process as well as potentially a credit program developed that would credit people for managing stormwater if they did, if they did those measures on their property in the meantime. And again, what we would be using to evaluate those measures would be the the state standards. The state has a manual for stormwater management, infiltration, buyer retention, all major measure of structural and non-structural improvements. So we would use those guidance in terms of evaluating whether or not it met the criteria. Lastly, I think we have, again, depending on what the council would like to see tonight and what might be most helpful, we're prepared to pull up some examples of the variety of impervious area that we have here in the city. So you can take a look at a property that has under 1,500 square foot of impervious area versus a property that has five or 6,000 square foot of impervious area. So you can see that. And and we'll be using both the MC Atlas information, which is publicly available. It's the GIS data that the county has as well as our own mapping and must give a shout out and thanks to the planning department. Jamie Ernst, who's no longer with us, and Michael Alexander, who helped us by creating that GIS map that's been much improved and now is linked on the city website, so people can actually scroll over it and identify property boundaries. So the last piece I wanted to say before we get into the PowerPoint or any questions is just to kind of capture for people to understand the the breadth of our existing stormwater program. We have over 17 miles of stormwater pipes in the city that we are responsible for. And again, the city inherited that from WSSC in the late 1990s. The city made the decision at that point to take over the system directly versus allowing the county to own and manage the system. And that was kind of like with most things. If you think about our police department or our library system, it's a way to maintain local control. It's a way to keep Tacoma Park dollars in Tacoma Park and to really be able to focus both maintenance efforts as well as new program needs directly in the city. So the decision the council made back then was to own and manage the stormwater system in the city so we could make sure it worked most effectively and efficiently for our residents. We have about 700 inlets in Tacoma Park. Those are those cut-throughs in the curb that capture water. And we have 78 outfalls that that discharge our stormwater into Sligo Creek and Long Branch. Of course, not all the water that comes through Tacoma Park is generated just by Tacoma Park. We also get to accept DC and Silver Spring water. So our system services a wide swath of our section of the of the universe and is really dictated by topography as well as location. So we're happy to say that we do have a very aggressive maintenance program and video inspection program for our systems. So we try to make sure it stays in excellent working order. Some of our part pipes and structures are over 100 years old. And we also are aggressively making sure that new systems get installed as we can. As you know, every year we talk to you about our budget and stormwater budget. And not only do we propose what we're going to do in the future year, we also have part of a five-year plan. So you can see ahead of time where the projects are that that we have intended to put forth in the city. So we do try to make an effort to provide that kind of forward thinking in terms of our stormwater management. And lastly, in addition to just making sure we do good maintenance and keep the system working, we do, are under a state mandate through our NPDES, our Clean Water Act permit, we have to treat 20% of our impervious area in the city in order to maintain our permit and meet our state and federal requirements. That requirement came into effect in 2013 and we have a deadline of 2025 to meet it. We're very well on our way and feel quite comfortable that we'll meet those requirements by 2025. But it requires aggressive action and and programs like you've all seen in your wards for stormwater facilities as well as treatment facilities. And so I just want to assure people that we are actively engaged in making sure we are complying with the laws. So I don't know, Jessica, do you think we should shift to the
Want to make sure people are aware of the map that's available where you can search your own properties. So let me share my screen.
Councilmember Smith had his hand up. Councilmember Smith, did you have a question now or do you want to wait till after the
Can I just, a quick question, Ms. Braithwaite, thank you very much for all your work on this. I really appreciate all the stormwater facilities that you included in Flower Avenue. I wish we could have done more. Can you remind us how we categorize the two to four unit apartment buildings? Are they considered single-family homes or are they multifamily?
They're considered multifamily. So they, from the advent of our program, have been billed based on actual impervious area. The single family are the only properties that are that are billed flat rate.
Okay, all right.
Currently, if you have a single, you know, single owner, single-family home that is rental, that's still considered single-family, but as as soon as you add an additional rental unit to that, it's considered a multifamily and billed at that rate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so here's the interactive map that our planning director Roz and her team made available. As you can see, you know, the the darker properties are the higher fees. So for you tonight, we've picked out just a couple of examples of the higher fee properties to show the real range in impervious surface area. But if you want to look up your own address, you just click and it shows you the address, the impervious surface, most recent estimate, as well as the proposed stormwater fee. So let me just move to our first example. So we're going to look at this property here, which has a higher impervious surface area than the properties around it. And if you look at the atlas, actually, Daryl, I'll let you take over from here and just kind of talk about how this one stands out.
Sure. I think what we're looking at there is that 7209 Cedar Avenue. And what you can see there is that in addition to the building itself, there's also an outbuilding, a garage, as well as a fairly large parking area behind it, a fairly large driveway and a lead walk. So that all those impervious surfaces together put it into that range that it's currently shown. I think it's the red color. And I can't remember because I don't see it in front of me. If that's the, yeah, the 425 to 500. I do want to caveat this, that the system that Black and Beach used, the LiDAR and the analysis that it does, is not able to determine a permeable surface from an impervious surface in terms of if someone went and replaced that driveway apron and created a eight-inch layer of gravel and special special soils and permeable pavers on top, it would it would read as impervious to the LiDAR because all it's doing is reflecting the light and showing a hard surface. So if we were to pursue a process using square footage, there would be a requirement for us to communicate directly with the property owners to identify which of those surfaces may have been made permeable or addressed differently than what the straight hard surface analysis might assume. So that is, you know, just, we want to acknowledge that that differentiation is not available from the technology, but would be a phase that would have to happen between when a decision was made and the final fee structure established.
And can I just ask a quick question about that?
Yeah.
Daryl, I'm sorry if I misunderstood or didn't understand. So you're saying if that would be the case, if there were, if there was a section of the property that was, that had like permeable pavers or something like that, not necessarily gravel? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, yeah, we, I don't know, Jessica, you want to pull up that definition of impervious surface? But that issue has come up before. We do have a definition of impervious surface that we have in the city code. So we're guided by that. In addition, we follow the guidance of the Maryland Department of Environment with regards to gravel surfaces in particular. And so basically, our city code defines impervious surface as a surface that is compacted or covered with material resistance to infiltration, not limited to streets, roofs, sidewalks, patios, driveways, parking lots, anything oiled, gravelled, grated, compacted, or anything that impedes a natural infiltration of surface water. And there is further guidance from the state as to when a gravel surface may be considered permeable versus impermeable. And it has to do with how it was constructed. And again, this is based on the criteria that the state sets for providing credit for treatment of stormwater. So if you have a gravel surface, the surface must be at least eight inches thick with a layer of geotextile fabric separating the gravel from the ground, covered by at least six inches of number two stone and at least two inches of number six or seven gravel stone, which is sort of standard practice for when someone is doing a permeable parking pad or permeable driveway. A permeable driving lane we have in front of the community center, for instance, is four feet deep. So in those cases where someone has specifically established a permeable parking pad, driveway, patio, or any other surface, they could provide us the construction details of how that work was done. And we could determine whether or not it met the criteria for permeability or not.
So you're saying that those are the types of things that would not show up in the analysis that you would have to go back and redo?
It would be reflected based on the LiDAR and the aerial photography analysis as hard surface. So it would just show up as hard surface. And so we would need to interact with the property owner to determine whether or not that particular section of hard surface was actually impervious or whether it had treatment provided that would enable permeability. But in general, just a gravel surface, and it's not just city of Tacoma Park. You'll find that this definition is just about everywhere. It's state of Maryland, Montgomery County, DC. Gravel surface that's subject to compaction from driving or heavy pedestrian walking is considered impervious. I know that that is, can come as a surprise to people who assume that gravel is better and can provide a permeable surface. But based on the compaction that happens when driving cars over or parking vehicles over it or heavy foot traffic over it, it really serves as a fairly impervious surface that does not allow for penetration.
I had another question, but I don't want to interrupt the presentation, but it's on this point. So tell me if you want to answer it now. So I've had a couple of questions come up from folks. One is on this question of the, as you said, you would work with, the city would work with individual homeowners and have, you know, about what they were put in and stuff. And I think some people are concerned that like, you know, if they just recently bought their home or whatever, they don't have like documentation, like, you know, is that, do you see that as a big hurdle? And then relatedly, I think one of the things I think the council needs to take into consideration, given the capacity of the city staff is, is how many people we're going to have to, you know, interact with as we're putting in place this new, if we do, you know, put in place this new system. I think that's something that we need to think about. So I don't know if you want to address those two things.
Sure, well, I think we will try to work with residents as best we can. As I mentioned, we have a existing appeal process now. The basic language is that the burden of proof is on the property owner, not the, not the city. That being said, if someone has inherited a, what appears to be a permeable deck or walkway or pathway, it's fairly easy to determine if it has been built to meet those criteria. You lift up the pavers on top, you see how deep the gravel is. You know, it doesn't require a major excavation. And I think what we're looking for is just, you know, some sense of was this, was this constructed as a permeable surface? Or did someone just say, you know what, I'm going to put some pavers down on my ground, my dirt here, and I like the way that looks. I did that in my own backyard. I like stepping stones, so I put a bunch of rock stepping stones down. I'm not going to claim that that's permeable. It's just rock stepping stones that I put on the existing surface. On the other hand, I did excavate three foot deep in, for a parking pad in my backyard. So I can, I can definitely verify and show the receipts for all the rock and stone that was put in to make that permeable. So I think what we'll try to do is just work with people best we can. Now, that is, of course, raises the next issue of who is it that we're going to be communicating with? And you all know our department well enough. We've got a city engineer who is half stormwater, half streets and roadways, and a construction manager and myself, and of course, the staff of the finance office. So I don't know exactly what to expect in terms of numbers of appeal or questions. I know since we've sent out the letter, I've probably talked to maybe a dozen and a half people. And I know you all have spoken with folks as well. I would encourage anybody with questions to send them to me. And if you have received emails or questions from people, please forward them to me. We can give them as much detail as possible on the current system and also hear from them, you know, where they think there's errors or issues that they have questions about. So I think now is a great time to have that type of input and conversation. You know, one of the things that we did with the Black and Beach study was do an evaluation of our impervious area. It should have been done a decade sooner. I mean, we did it in the mid 80s or so. And then we should have done it much more frequently than we have. So I think what we can say is that in the future, we probably should assume to do another analysis using existing technology at least every 10 years to catch changes in building footprint or improvements that have been made so we can stay current. And then, you know, the other issue in terms of what it will take to respond to people's appeals or questions for credit, a lot of that will depend on the timeframe in which we have expected to respond. If we can decide now what kind of fee structure we're going to do and have a time to be able to notify people and give them time to consider whether or not they want to appeal and then have some, you know, several months before the fee would actually go into effect. With most fees, you pay the fee and then you appeal. And then if your appeal is successful, the city refunds the amount that you were overcharged. So, you know, I, again, I'm assuming that we're going to have a three to six month timeframe where we're evaluating appeals, communicating with people and getting back to them. So as long as it's a shared understanding that we've got some time to do that process, I don't think it will be particularly onerous and that we can manage it with existing staff. If there's a need to have a very tight timeframe, like we want this in and out in 30 days, then of course, we need to look at ways to be able to make that kind of staff time available to evaluate, review and provide a response. I don't know if that answered all your questions.
That was perfect, thank you. That answered my questions. That's exactly what I needed, thank you very much. Councilmember Kovar, I see your hand up. Do you want to ask a question before the deputy city manager continues?
Just one, one thing, and I know, I know the presentation has to come out, more questions later. But this just relates to what was just asked. So the other type of thing that maybe wouldn't get picked up by the technology is if somebody has made an improvement, but it just looks like a regular lawn.
Right.
But it's actually a rain garden or some sort of bio retention type feature. You couldn't tell that probably just from the, from the LiDAR in some cases. So what would happen, you think, in a case like that? And could that also give a person credit or say a reduction in their bill? Would it depend on the specifics of the infrastructure that they've installed?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And it's one that we need to really put some heavy thought in. With the issue of an appeal based on impervious area, it's a fairly factual evaluation. You do some measurements, you know, and you determine whether or not the size matches what we said or what the alteration is. And if it's a special surface that is permeable, we determine that and then can deduct that mathematically from the total square footage of impervious area. So that's all fairly cut and dried. The issue that you raised, Councilmember Kovar, is related to individuals creating treatment facilities within, in their own properties. Say they've installed dry wells or they have a conservation landscaping or they did downspout disconnects that shoot their groundwater into a vegetated swale. My, my thought at this point is that we would use the same criteria that the state uses when we're doing those measures to provide credit. So I think there is a, a standard for what type of credit you get based on what the measure is. Typically, you're treating for a one-year storm. That's not all rainwater forever, but just a certain capacity within a certain rain amount. So you get a certain credit towards treatment. So if we were to apply those same standards to what people have individually done on their properties, what I imagine we would come out at the end with is a credit towards treatment. So instead of the full impact of the impervious area based on their building footprint and their driveway and their lead walks, that we would apply the similar credit to their, to their treatment effort that would reduce the amount of runoff that could be anticipated from that property. So I think it's, that will really be a challenge in that, you know, we do have the Maryland manual that defines and just describes what the treatment measures are. But I think similar to improvements made by property owners that are no, not currently there, people moved into a property, some of that may be difficult to ascertain, particularly if it was not related to a building renovation that required a stormwater permit, where we've issued a permit. We have as-built drawings. We know what it is that was put on the property. So those that were just individually done based on good intention and environmental awareness of the property owner will have to work on a case-by-case basis to determine what that will mean. I think at base level, it will result in some type of credit for treatment that will reduce the equivalent residential, the equivalent impervious area on that property. But we're going to have to create the process for evaluating that.
Great. Councilwoman Devalla, do you want to ask a question now or should we continue with the presentation?
I got the hint. I think my question was just answered, which was about cisterns that are put in during the development process. During, when someone's expanding their house. So, yeah, I get the idea. Credits for, for, credits for things that are not obviously permeable and credits for things that are treating stormwater, but that one's a lot harder to, a little harder to create because you have to develop it yourself. The first part is relatively standard already. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Great, I turn back to the deputy city manager to.
Yeah, we have just a couple more examples and then we.
Thank you.
Back to the of the, that'd be around 525. And if you look at the aerial, you can see that, you know, the driveway is significant and you can't really see in the trees here, but there's, there's additional area in back. You know, and obviously, it's compared to around, you know, significant difference there. And then as another example, here's another red property. And Daryl, are you familiar with this one?
Yeah, yeah, that's on Lincoln Avenue. It's a fairly large lot, which I think is, is, it can basically show the difference between, between properties. So in addition to the house, the building footprint itself, it has a fairly long and large parking lane, driveway, as well as an outbuilding in the back. So some significant impervious area. So that's what would put it up at the higher end of the, of the analysis for impervious area.
Final example, this would be a lower, lower bracket, surrounded by, you know, brackets right next to it. And that's this building here in the center.
I think that the, the point that I wanted to make on this particular comparison is when you're wanting to know what the difference is between those folks that are going to be potentially paying less than the current stormwater fee versus about the same as the current stormwater fee versus more. Right here, you have a perfect example of three different, three different versions. You've got the fairly large footprint house with deck and extended buildings out the back and driveway compared to the house just south of that, which is a much smaller footprint, smaller driveway, potentially some decks in back. And then that house just further south of that, which is even, even smaller with a smaller driveway. So that kind of shows the, the variety within the existing property boundaries and why those three different tiers of rate structure. And I think, you know, just to kind of bring it home, again, as I've said, we've, we've spoken about this at length over the past couple of years. The decision before you tonight is whether to step away from the flat fee, which we have, to a tiered fee. I really don't have a dog in the, in the race on this. Whatever the council feels best meets their needs. I think part of the analysis that Black and Beach did, they recommended the tier structure to us because of the wide variety in impervious area per single-family lot. I think that difference in the range surprised all of us. And it is, it is a practice that's being done in other areas. That said, if the council is comfortable staying with the flat fee, I do want to remind you that we will need to increase the fee from the current $92 to 108 in order to maintain that $700,000 annual revenue generation that the fee provides. And part of the reason why the fee would need to increase is because one of the outcomes of the Black and Beach study was to let us know that our assumptions about the amount of impervious area provided by non-single-family residential was actually a slightly smaller percentage than the single-family residential based on the. slightly smaller percentage than the single-family residential based on the now average impervious area of a little over 2,000 square feet per property, which had previously been a little less than 800 feet, a little more than 800 feet less at 1,200 and so. So we implemented the new rate fee for the non-single-family properties in the FY21 budget cycle. So they are now being charged appropriately based on their impervious area, assuming the average equivalent residential unit. And so we punted last year on the issue of single-family rates. So what we need to decide at this point is how we want to charge single-family properties, whether we want to continue on with the flat rate or whether we want to move to a tiered structure.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. I also want to note for folks that the city manager sent us an email. Sometimes this past week, I can't remember what day it was. It is up with our agenda because there are related questions and Ms. Braithwaite touched upon some of those that every time we talk about stormwater do come up, like the history, like why do we do it in Tacoma Park and why isn't it part of the county system? And so there's more, Ms. Braithwaite spoke to that tonight. There is more detail on that posted on the information the city manager provided us, as well as I want to remind folks that we did have a presentation back in the fall anticipating this work from Montgomery County's stormwater folks. And the clear message from I think that presentation is that they're completely overwhelmed. So with stormwater work. So that's just one issue. The other is regarding the rain skates rebate. That is something that we had discussed in great detail as a council, and there's more information on that as well. So I just, you know, one of the things that we are focused on here is the fee, as Ms. Braithwaite has mentioned tonight, but I did want to make sure, because those questions do come up, that there is information on that as well. So now I am seeing some hands up. First, Councilmember Smith, and then Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you again, Ms. Braithwaite. So if we went with the tier system, when you spoke with the consultant, did they talk about anticipating future increases by future council? If we use this tier system, one, and two, can a council tie it to some sort of index? So that, you know, it automatically kind of figures out that we need to collect more money for this thing.
That's a great question. Currently, what the revenue generation is tied to is our analysis of the funding we need to implement our stormwater maintenance, and that includes our regular annual video inspection, outfall testing, state mandated required programmatic work, as well as new system improvements. And then, as I mentioned, we have that deadline of 2025 to meet the 20% treatment goals for existing impervious area. So we've established a couple of years ago a budget of $700,000 that we said was sufficient as an annual budget to maintain the program and keep us operating, enable enough funding for us to do major capital projects as well as routine maintenance. So the revenue really drives the funding question. So the point at which the fee structure would need to change is the point at which we decide, you know what, $700,000 isn't cutting it anymore. We've got X number of new needs, and so we need to increase the annual funding. One of the topics of discussion that we've had is this issue of how to address climate change and stormwater and private property impacts. Currently, our system is really focused on the stormwater management system within the public right-of-way. So we pick it up from the curb line, we put it in pipes, we do treatment, we put it out in Sligo Creek, we make sure the outfalls work, we do the water quality testing. If we are to assist property owners on private property, deal with property-to-property issues, kind of upstream-downstream issues, if the council wants to consider funding that out of the stormwater fund, then, of course, that would require an increase in revenue. If we wanted to fund it out of general funds or some other budget account, then it wouldn't. So the question of the fee amounts changing is really entirely tied to the outcome of the amount of revenue that you need on an annual basis to maintain our programs. We do have a five-year CIP that we've put together, and we do feel like the $700,000 figure has worked for the past several years and will work for the next, you know, five at least. But, you know, crystal ball notwithstanding, I don't think we can see it further ahead than that at this time. So there may be a need as prices for everything increase to increase our construction budgets and our inspection budgets beyond what we currently have. But I would say we can feel fairly comfortable that over the next several years, we you know, expect about five years that that $700,000 figure will be sufficient to do what we need to do.
Yeah, you know, climate change, I'm glad you brought that up because I think that is what is putting pressure on our budget, right? Residents need help, they want help, and they're asking, why can't you guys help us? But I think that there's somebody out there, whether it's a research institution, the feds with this new administration, someone's going to come up with a number or a formula to quantify what that looks like. Because I've been on some calls with the Intergovernmental Affairs with the White House, and that's all they're talking about is climate change and how they can help, you know, more jurisdictions. So someone's going to come up with that number. I just want us to be prepared that, you know, once that happens, you can bring that back to council, and I know you will. Bring that back to council so that we can, or future council, can think about what that number is really going to be. If it's, you know, $100,000 more, $300,000 more, but there is going to be, thank you.
Great. Councilman Kostick.
Thank you very much for all of the information and for reteaching us about this every time we have a new work session. I feel like I have to go back through it all every time. I will admit that I have sort of mixed feelings overall on the restructuring. On the one hand, I think it is, you know, it makes a lot of logical sense to tie the fee to the amount of impervious space that people have and the amount that they're contributing to the stormwater system. And I like the the aspect of this that standardizes how multifamily and single-family and commercial properties are all having the same formula. To me, that seems like an equitable approach. At the same time, I'm looking at some of these increases that people are seeing as individual property owners being, you know, 300%, 400% higher than what they have right now. And, you know, some people having to pay $500 a year, whereas they were only paying 92 right now. And a lot of the staff work going into the appeals and and just some other questions that I'll ask in a minute, but I feel like those are contributing to me wondering, you know, how much of an impact is this having? Is it worth the amount of staff time and kind of work on this? So I have a couple of sort of technical questions and then a couple of kind of bigger picture, I think, questions about information I would like to have as we further consider this. One technical question is something I've heard from a lot of people. Is that if people have sidewalks in front of their house, is that included in the amount that they pay?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. There is no intention to bill people for impervious area of public sidewalks or public roadways. So that is not to be included in what we would consider the impervious area on their private property. Now that said, if any of you have ever looked at county tax maps, you will see, especially in Tacoma Park, that we have some weird property boundaries. You know, we have private property owners who own a section of the road. So it may show up on the maps initially as their private property boundary extending into the roadway or extending over the sidewalk. In those cases, the assumption is that we would correct for that and not include the private sidewalk, I mean, the public sidewalk in their private calculations. So we would be able to see on a street-by-street basis where there was a public sidewalk that was contiguous for the entire roadway, and we would deduct that. Part of the beauty of what Black and Beach did when they did their analysis is there's actually 10 categories of impervious area that they evaluated for. So they evaluated for building footprint, they evaluated for non-street-related sidewalk, street-related sidewalk, street surface within private property, street service in the public right-of-way. So they've kind of categorized and identified in their evaluation the various impervious area totals they did. So that will enable us, as well as the property owner, to take a look at that. And if we see that we have a sidewalk that is contiguous to a street that appears to be a public sidewalk that's included in their total, we would deduct that amount from their total.
And that's a process that you would envision doing, not based on appeals, but just a review before we move forward.
Right. We have that documentation in front of us based on the Black and Beach analysis. So we can sort based on those that show street frontage in their calculations, and we would have to take a look at those and then make that correction.
Okay, thank you. I also had a question. I think Councilmember Smith's question was very similar, and I was just kind of thinking ahead to how to how the increases in the future would be handled, especially if you have people who are paying $500 already per year, you know, just continuing to increase that. And I think with climate change, we probably are going to see more of a need to focus on stormwater and spend more. So that's just something I kind of was thinking about in terms of looking at the new structure. The other couple of questions I have are in terms of the actual impact on our racial equity and affordability initiatives. And I saw in the memo that there was sort of a statement, a general statement about, you know, analyzing whether this would impact, like what the impact of this would be on racial equity. And I thought I remembered us having a little bit more of a discussion about this at one of our last work sessions. But I wondered whether we could dig a little deeper into that before we make the decision, and if there's any way to look at the properties that are paying, that would be paying a higher rate. If there's any demographic information, we can garner and cross-reference that, too. I know that's difficult. If not, I was wondering about whether that could be cross-referenced with home or property assessed value and/or maybe the last, the date or the and/or the cost of the last property sale, because I think that might help us see whether they're, you know, long-term property owners who've been in the city for a long time who are going to suddenly be hit with a $500 cost and might be on a fixed income.
That is probably doable because at the top end, we get to very few actual properties that are affected. So there's actually 20% of the properties, 731 properties that would be paying less, 25, 50, or $75. There's 25% of the properties that we'd be paying about the same. That's 892 properties that would be paying $100. And as I mentioned, we're currently at 92, but we have to go to 108 if we're going to maintain our revenue of 700,000. There is 1,609 properties that will pay 125 to 175. So that's 44% of the existing single-family properties. And then, as you go above 175, there's 10%, 351 properties that would be paying 200 to 275. And then, once you get above 275, there are 51 properties. So 38 or 1% that are paying 300 to 375. 12 properties are less than 1%. It's actually 0.3% that would be paying 400 to 475. And one property, it's paying above 500. So when you get to those numbers, you're looking at a pretty small frame of reference if you consider 300 and above. So if we're looking at 50 so properties, the initial map that Planning did actually included all the data related to that property that's in the county tax records. So it shows the property value or the sale value. So we could take a look at that for those at the high end. Again, because we're talking about 51 properties, I think it's a doable thing. So I'd be happy to dig into that a little bit and provide some additional information about either the assessment value, whatever you think would be most useful, the assessed value, or I think we could at least make an assumption about length of ownership based on last sale. And again, that's totally within the tax records and the ESTAT records. So it would be feasible to, you know, do that for that, you know, quantity of properties if you wanted to see what that looked like at the top end.
Councilmember Kostick, I'd also like to note that, you know, I recommended also that there be a, essentially a scholarship availability for hardship for if there's a particular property owner that's having difficulty. The other thing that, you know, it used to be that the flat rate was easy to use because people had to send in checks. And so you remembered it each time. Now it's on most people's property tax bill, gets paid by escrow. I mean, it's a different, it's a little bit of a different system on that. So it's not something that's just for many people not coming out of their accounts once a year in a lump sum, kind of that's in a special way. But I do think that besides kind of whatever investigation that you'd like to see, we do have the opportunity to work with people on, you know, on a hardship issue. When it comes down to looking at race, it's really hard. We can estimate by the old data from the old census blocks, but we can't easily do that on a house-by-house basis.
Thank you. Yeah, I would be really interested in seeing what the data showed at the upper end, but I also wonder maybe on the lower end, if you could take a look at the properties that would be reduced down to 25 and 50, because that might also be, I mean, one of my concerns about raising the rate overall and having everyone pay 108 is the impact on those property owners who actually would be paying less and maybe shouldn't be paying as much. So I'd be interested if you could take a look at that as well.
Sure.
The other thing I wondered about was, you know, as we look at trying to provide opportunities for greater density for transit-accessible housing and ADUs and you know, potentially not just single-family, a single homeowner type of situations. I also don't want this to disincentivize people adding an ADU to their property or building a townhome on their property or things like that. So I think it would be useful to think about how there might and maybe that, maybe that means we shouldn't move forward with it, or maybe it means we need to build in some type of some type of, you know, exception for that in order to encourage those types of properties.
Councilmember Kostick, I'm confused on that because now if you, if you become a multifamily house, then you have to pay by the amount of the property.
Right, that's true. But an ADU, but my understanding is that an ADU would not qualify as a multifamily.
You know, I'm not that's, when the question was raised, I wanted to go back and look at that. So we will look at that, but obviously, we are trying to encourage more use of properties. And one of the downsides on this could be if we don't change this, then they are penalized perhaps more than, so that's something that we'll need to look at. But I need to find out the answer on the ADU.
Okay, great. And then I guess I'll just add in a couple of final thoughts. And I might follow up with you as well, Ms. Braithwaite, with some email questions. I would say if we do move forward with this structure, I think we should look at doing some type of subsidy for the phase-in period for the higher, the higher fees, which I think which I think we talked about previously, so that those people have an opportunity to kind of get ready to pay a higher fee and and also plenty of notification ahead of time so that people can be prepared with a higher rate. The appeal process, we talked about. The assistance scholarship program, definitely that needs to be available to people. And then the other thing I was really thinking about is that it seems to me, I mean, I've I've heard from more people about stormwater in the past month since this sort of started to be talked about than I've ever heard from about stormwater. And it seems like a really great kind of, in a way, one-time opportunity to capture people while they're thinking about it. And so it seems like maybe there are some opportunities to do some education on how people's properties and their personal choices and what they do on their property impacts the larger system and maybe even some incentivizing, maybe even on a one-time basis now when people are looking at it and thinking about it in terms of making changes to their property that would improve the whole system. So I'd be interested in recommendations on that. And I think, you know, as you delve into the the information that is provided, it starts to make sense to you, but it is a lot for people to digest. So the more that we can just make it easier for people to understand what's being discussed and why and what it would involve, that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Great. I'd like to piggyback on that last point that Councilwoman Kostic raised because I do think we have some really good information on the website. But there are some, I think there's probably, if I was to count five core questions that keep coming up, and I think we've hit upon almost all of them tonight, Ms. Braithwaite. I know in the emails that I've been CC'd on that you've responded to, it's there, but I think adding some of them to the website or having a some kind of fact sheet available to folks would be really helpful. And I know all of us on council would be more than helpful to help identify them. But I kind of feel like there are like maybe seven, but there are definitely five that are just the the repeat customers that I see come up in people. Once, once we provide that information, most of the folks who I've been communicating with, it just, it makes things, it makes a lot more sense to them. So I think it would be helpful to have that in one place, especially also so that you don't have, that that we can share that information and you don't necessarily need to be doing all the great work you have been doing over the past two weeks, but I know it's a lot answering individual emails.
Sure, sure. Yeah, happy to add that to the website. So any guidance you guys can give about those those major questions that keep getting asked.
Mm-hmm. Great. Councilwoman Circe.
Yes, so I want to echo Councilmember Kostic in saying thank you for being a broken record and repeating to us time and time again what you have previously presented to us. And I do want to echo the sentiments of, you know, while we have people captive and paying attention, it's unfortunate, but usually people don't start paying attention till you talk about mandating something that's going to hit their pockets. And everyone is a captive audience. So we might want to use this as an opportunity to not only educate folks about, you know, this this particular issue in terms of the fee, but also things that they may want to consider in terms of managing stormwater on their property. And I know you did this already, so please forgive me. The the top tiers, right? So the folks, I'm starting to call them the purple houses and the red houses, right? The folks that are at the the top end of the of the curve, I like to call it, like the nice bell curve that you've created with the data in terms of the cost allocation. Given that small number of houses is on that tail, would there be a substantial impact to our overall cost if we were to cut the max off at the at the 400, like at the purple stage? So make the the purple houses and the the red houses pay the pink fee. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying. Yeah, again, because we are talking about a fairly small number of properties, I mean, of the total, a little over 3,600 houses, we're talking about 51, so.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be tremendous. And then, you know, perhaps, you know, as what folks mentioned, this this notion of a phase in, right? So it could either be, you know, a phase in or I would hate for us to, you know, find ourselves in a situation that because of a need to kind of really try to control that top end, we find ourselves in a situation where we're a few thousand dollars short every year. We don't want to be there either. But I do wonder whether or not, because of how it might feel for someone to go from like $92 to $525, that's a lot of money. Is there a way to kind of phase in that top tier? Either we phase it or we just decide to cap it at the 325 to 400 range? Because I I agree with what Councilwoman Kostic has said, you know, it's, I I do believe that it is it is equitable to make sure that, you know, people are paying for the amount of impervious surface that they have in their on their property and and that seems fair. I mean, that's what we require multifamily buildings to do and commercial properties to do. If that makes sense. I think for me, the biggest issue is trying to address that drastic increase for some. And what would be the appropriate approach to do that? Because that's that's a pretty substantial jump. And given that people are dealing with those stormwater fees as part of their their tax bill and their escrow bill, does it make sense instead of trying to rebate folks later to kind of schedule a phase in approach for for, you know, our stormwater amount so that it's incorporated in the tax bill included as part of the escrow over time? Does that make sense? Then trying to do like the scholarship and then the rebate and then, you know, it might make more sense to to tell those those higher tier houses that you may work up to this 525, but for year one, everyone's going to, the high tier folks are going to be capped at the pink. Then we phase it, you know what I mean? So it's a it's a more tiered structure and it's a part of the tax bill than trying to do it on the back end, if that makes sense at all. And I'd also buy a little bit of time because I could imagine that folks who are at that 525 range or that 425 to 500 range are definitely going to want to rebuke and want to dispute. So if we were to say, even though we may acknowledge those 51 houses that's at that top tier, if we were to say for the first year, everyone's going to be capped no more than that 325 to that 400, put that in the tax bill and then that kind of gives us a little bit more time to work them up. So that's, I know that was a very long-winded, convoluted way of kind of thinking through it. The short is, I I think it makes sense to charge people based on the amount of impervious surface that they have. My primary concern is making sure that we're kind of controlling the financial hit that some of our homeowners are going to take because of the fact that they have so much impervious surface on their property. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep. I I think those options are all doable. In that one chart that is provided as an attachment, you can see the fee rate and the number of houses per ward. So if you wanted to play with the math, you could take a look at that and see what it is. And I will certainly do the same.
Yeah, I just, Councilwoman Circe, are you done or?
Yeah, I'm done.
I just want to say I 110% agree with Councilwoman Circe in wanting to raise that point as well. And I think that's exactly what I would like us to see to go in that direction because I think even just, even if it's the 51 house, so like whatever we decide is that cap and then phase it in. I think right now, just even, you know, going from the whatever, even if it was $108 up to like 400, like, you know, something over $400 is just, it's a big hit for people right now. And so I'd like to see us, and I think this might be, and again, this is something Ms. Braithwaite, I'd like you to think about, as Councilwoman Circe said, easier to do this year than putting in this process, doing the appeals and then having to worry about scholarships. And I mean, we may still want to do that for folks in this 275 plus range anyway because we may have to do that. But it just, it seems like we're, there's a lot we're trying to do. And so.
To me, it seems like that capping or phase in because we're directing it and it would happen automatically would be would be simpler than folks requesting a, you know, consideration of a subsidy or requesting assistance. So I think it would be simpler to implement.
Right. And I think also like the idea of somebody having to request in everything, there's also that burden. And so, you know, again, in a year that we've had, a year, a decade, in a year, I I think making this as easiest as we can on residents would be the best. Okay, let's see, who, our Councilmember Kovar.
You, and and thanks for the information. I appreciate it. And a few of the questions that were answered, I was going to ask, so I appreciate that. I will have a few other questions and maybe some can be answered tonight and others later. But I wanted to make some more general comments first. I do think that moving toward a tiered system is more fair and we ought to, or fairer, and we ought to move in that direction ideally. I I don't know whether capping and off and phasing at the upper levels necessarily makes sense or not, but I think to me, the question of the fee structure is also connected to what we might do to try to address some of these broader questions relating to increased stormwater flow across and among private properties and public properties connected to heavy rainfall that's from more intense storms that I think we all believe is part of climate change. And, you know, we've talked about the need to address that topic, stormwater. In our, we haven't finished our priorities document yet. We're going to be talking about that after this, but we've had versions of that in there before and I think we will probably end up in there again. We also have it in our climate change framework. And we've also submitted testimony, Councilmember DeVos drafted. We submitted testimony calling for adjusting some of the criteria and standards that the state uses for stormwater and flooding. And in fact, in the discussion we had about the zoning change, that actually Seth Brey has mentioned tonight in the public comment period that we were talking about the other day, one of the, one of the points was that if you have more parking because you built a duplex or a triplex and then that could lead to more land being paved over. And so all of those questions indicate, I think, that we've agreed that this is a priority. And certainly the big storm that we had last September, and then we had a larger number of them a few years prior to that. I mean, I heard from dozens and dozens of people in North Dakota did too. It's a big issue. It's very expensive. In my case, in my own house, I, in my own yard, I've got a couple of rain gardens and some other drainage things that we've installed. It's very costly and I think it's beyond what some people can do. But not only that, I don't think it really works to say, I'm going to just fix it on, one person fixes it on their property and it could just lead to the water just flowing to to someone else's. And so to some extent, I think it's important for us to try to address in a more holistic way, stormwater problems that affect multiple properties or residences or very wide areas. And so to me, I think the fee structure goes along with that. So I mentioned this to my colleagues, and I think I said in a recent council discussion, also, I don't support going forward with with the fee change unless we also make some steps and commitments to taking some action on this larger stormwater question as well. And I talk in a minute about some of the things I think about doing there. But certainly, Councilmember DeVos and our other colleagues as well have talked a lot about what some proposals are that we might want to do on on stormwater. So for me, I don't, I wouldn't vote in favor of this unless we also have something that we begin to move forward on to address that. Now, I will say one other point, just, I was recently in a a phone meeting with some neighbors about the stormwater issues that are coming up connected to the new Montgomery College building. And to me, what's apparent is that they met the law. They did what they needed to and the city signed off on it. But that also doesn't capture the potential higher levels of rainfall that could come from these more intense storms. And so I do think there's a lot of reasons why we need to do that. In particular, if if something like more than half or three quarters of the residents are going to see potential increases as a result of a system along the lines of what we're talking about tonight being implemented. I realize some of those increases might not be that high, but I think residents have a reasonable claim to say, okay, if I'm going to pay more, what do we get? And if the answer is nothing, you just get exactly the same system that we currently have. To me, that is inadequate, which is why I'm thinking, and, you know, this might have to come out of the regular budget that we could do more work there. So before I ask the questions, I'll just say some of the things I've been thinking about that we could do to address this would be one, and City Manager mentioned this, establishing a resilience fund in the budget that could be used for more than just stormwater in the budget, but that would be one thing. I'd like to explore the idea of paying an outside consultant to look at the problem areas around the city and maybe it's more than our staff could take on and make some recommendations to us so that in the areas where large numbers of properties, residents are affected or or big geographical areas affected. And that could even include restoring some of these undergrounded natural drainage systems that have been covered up before. I know it's possible to have stormwater runoff from a property connect directly into our stormwater system, but I don't know how easy it is. It's a, I think, permanent process. In some cases, I'd like to see us try to make that easier. I'd like to see us have a periodic, I don't know if it'd be annual, but periodic anyway, trainings for stormwater contractors because one of the problems that a lot of residents ask me is they don't know who's reliable, who's trustworthy. And we wouldn't endorse them, but at least we could say they understand how our how our laws work. Two other things that I would suggest is, this is sort of model and what we did within the tree ordinance where when there's more than 10 trees to be cut down, there's a public process, a public meeting, more communication, things of that nature. I think that where there are larger institutional or commercial or industrial developments or structures being built, again, will have a bigger stormwater impact. We might have some enhanced public meetings of that kind. And, you know, others have talked about this, but some sort of credits for actions that people have taken. So those are just ideas. I'm not saying they're perfect and maybe there are other ones, but I'd like to see us working toward doing some of those things if we're going to do a version of this new fee structure as well. And so one key question I have is, does this, the decisions about the fee just have to be done in time for the budget, the same as, say, on our property tax rate, which is mid-May, or is there a different cycle for that?
If I can answer that, so I raise my hand for that. We really, we really need to unfortunately act on this earlier than the time that you adopt the budget. It it requires code change and it requires a lot of prep work for what gets submitted to the county. And so, so I think it ends up being, you know, an agreement by council that that's what you'll consider during the budget for some of these other kinds of things because the things that you're talking about all have a budgetary impact. And so it, this, the reason we're here now as opposed to later in the process, closer to budget is because we need this extra time and you need to have a code change to switch the system.
What would be your estimate of when we'd have to know if we're going to do that? If we're going to do something like this for the coming fiscal year?
Early, pretty fast. That's why we have the public hearing scheduled on the 24th. And then I would hope that the council would act in March.
Yeah, we already have, I mean, it's already on the calendar. And I just want to remind our colleagues that we were supposed to do this last year. This, this was, this was, we had started talking about this last year and because of COVID, we were not able to get the information out to residents, such as the letter or hold a public here. such as the letter or hold a public hearing that was all to be scheduled last March. So we're, we kind of punted last year on this during our budget. And so I think.
And you had to pay $50,000 to help support the, the stormwater fund because there wasn't enough money coming in to, to total that $700,000.
I mean, I recognize that the things I'm talking about cost money. I'm just trying to understand what the timing is. So that's been answered and I appreciate that. A couple of more narrow things that people ask me about, and if there's no immediate answer available, if it's just, this is kind of what would have to be figured out, that's okay. But so if there's a shared driveway, for example, or if someone has a pool or if there's very uneven terrain. So is there a difference between a flat yard and a hilly yard? And I don't know, Miss Bray, whether you can talk about any of those kinds of things?
Sure. Our current analysis does not look at the topography of the impervious area, the location or what's surrounding it. It simply identifies the impervious area. So we do not factor in things like, is this at the bottom of a slope or is it at the top of a slope? So it's strictly based on the impervious footage. I will say that it tends to be, because it's easy to identify that way. Whereas the topography and whether or not there's drainage is a little more challenging. Most jurisdictions just stick with the footprint model of impervious area when they're using these types of things. And there was another piece.
Share driveways?
Oh yeah, that, that's identified on the property records. So the property boundary shows the split on the shared driveway. So the portion that's on one lot is showed on one and the portion that's on the other lot is showed on the other.
I don't think there's many in, in Dakota part, but someone asked me about pools. I'm going to ask about pools.
Yeah, I, I was looking into that. There are very few, but pools in Black and Beach's analysis are included as impervious areas, though I was noticing that I believe the county does not count pools as impervious. So we'll have to take a look at that. There's just a handful of pools that would be.
Yeah, in the county, the, the, the surround of the pool is impervious, but where the water is is considered not impervious.
So someone asked this, if someone's disabled and needs more paved over yard, maybe if I can put it that way, to maneuver around their home, is that something that could potentially be taken into account?
I think that would be open for an appeal. We currently don't have a way to credit or offset, you know, impervious area related to accessibility versus not.
Is that something that could be considered?
I think anything's possible. We'd have to figure out what part of the process that would be. I think it would be, it would have to be either through an appeal or outreach from the property owner to identify that as the reason for the impervious area.
Just a few other things, and I know my, my colleagues want to ask questions, so I apologize for taking a lot of time. But so in the current law and the current ordinance, it says when you appeal, and I think this is for big commercial or building owners or apartment building owners, you have to hire an engineer or a surveyor. Are we, are we anticipating that that would be required if someone's appealing? Or are you anticipating some more low key version of that?
I think we would want to maintain the, the assumption that the burden of proof is on the property owner to, to provide information that counters what we have based on the LIDAR and county tax record and GIS analysis. I would think that the way they would provide that, I don't know if we would require stamped engineering drawings. I think they would need to just show us the calculations that indicated there was something different.
And a receipt from a, from a contractor or something like that or?
Well, if, if we were talking, I mean, if we're talking about challenging the, or appealing the footprint issue, that's one thing. If we're talking about requesting credit for a treatment capacity, I think we would need for them to document how it was constructed and what was there. Cause you won't always be able to tell from the surface. So they'd need to have a contract, a contract or construction drawings or construction details that would provide verification of that.
So just two other questions and I'll pass it on to others. A lot of people asked, and maybe you can just say a word about this. So for the 700,000, which is the annual budget, people have said, is that only used for stormwater projects? And I think the answer is yes, but that may include both salaries for people and infrastructure work that they do. But can you just say a couple of things about how the money is used and, and respond to this question of whether it's used for anything else?
Yeah, yeah, it is entirely used for stormwater. It can't be used for anything else. So because you guys established the budget as the stormwater board and that is, those funds are in a special budget. So we have a stormwater budget and both revenue as well as expenditures. So it is strictly and only used for stormwater. In terms of personnel costs, we have a whopping 0.75 FTEs that are charged to the stormwater budget. So that's the halftime of our city engineer and a quarter time of our construction manager. They likely spend much more time than that on stormwater projects and issues, but that is what we assess for the stormwater fund.
Last question, last question, I mean, it sounds like the, and several of my colleagues mentioned this too. It sounds like the appeal process could get really complicated. And we did have one resident who spoke in the public comment period suggesting maybe there should be fewer tiers. I don't know enough about it to be able to say that, but are you concerned at all that the, you know, it could potentially require another percentage of an FTE to, to manage all of the appeals that might come in? Or is it the type of thing where the first year there'd be a lot and then after that it would go more smoothly? Or, you know, is it worth it to create a big administrative?
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate the need for additional FTEs. Again, kind of my comments earlier, it really depends on the timeframe that we're assuming for receiving and making decisions and refunding funds if we determine that the amount that we charged was in excess. So if we have a significant amount of time to do that process, three months or four months, then I don't anticipate that we'll have a, a need for additional staff. I think we can, within Public Works and Finance, be able to evaluate the appeals that come in. That said, who knows? I mean, how many appeals will come in? And we may have issues with appeals come in and we send them back for more detail and information. So they may extend out for quite a, quite an amount of time.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Mind me, okay, who's left? Let's see, I have Councilwoman Siemens and then DeVos.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, this is, this is important because right now we have an unfair way that we tax people for the stormwater budget. But at the same time, we also have serious stormwater problems within the city. And it's not for everybody, but it's for a lot of our residents are having problem with stormwater runoff and damage to their property from it. So I guess my first question is, and I, and you know, is all this realignment of the fee going to sweeten the pot so we can do some more remediation? Or is this really just to pay the bills where we are right now?
It's to maintain the budget that we've established annually and that we have for the next five years. So it's, it's a status quo budget. That said, we do have some fairly aggressive programs in the, in the capital budget, both for this year as well as future years, though those, those projects are all on public property.
Right, right. It's, so the change in fee structure is to be more equitable in the way that we tax for stormwater. But we're still at some point going to have to, should I say downstream? We're going to have to look at the, the work that we do because there's a lot of the stormwater problems that we have within the city. There is affecting residents and their properties is on private properties. And, you know, that's something we're going to have to handle in the future. But separate and aside from tonight's discussion, I would just say, and I, you know, I'm on a, I live on a property that the fee is going up to, I would say two tiers, because from where the price is right now to where it's going to be, it's, it's a significant jump. But aside from that, I, I think it's important for us to move to a equitable fee structure. So I support the proposed fee structure. But I also certainly understand the concern about the council member seriously brought forward about the significant jump that some of the properties in the city have. Looking at the map, I'm surprised to hear that it's 50 some properties, but the purple, red and black are jumping more than I would consider fair at this point in time. The, the, the switch, if we do it, if we implemented it as council member seriously suggested, we would go to the new tiers for the three lower levels. And then we would kind of cap the fee increases on the three higher levels. And so effectively what we're saying is that where we were unfair to the, to the properties with less impervious space in the past, we would be fair to them now at the expense of the city. The, we would spread that, that additional cost among all taxpayers to let us cap the high, the three higher tiers. I'm, I understand it. I'm open to that. I, I look forward to hearing what the proposal is to implement it that way. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeVos.
Yes, thank you. So a few, a few things on the fee system progress, I do support the concept. I had some questions about the technical aspects and many of them have been addressed. I think your, your comments, Ms. Bray Swath about looking at credits for, for, for features that are not obvious on LIDAR or setting up an appeals process that will address some of these concerns, make a great deal of sense. I think I heard you say that, that the, the map is based on Black and Beach's estimates, but that before an actual num, dollar number is assigned to a property that you would be reviewing each of the properties to come up with the fee? To make, to make sure there's nothing that strikes, because some of these are a little weird. But, you know, they're working with the data they have. So you're going to grab, you're going to, you're going to check every one of these before you, okay? And if there's an opportunity at that point to make some of these corrections before we even get to the fees, to the first bill, that would be great. Yeah, so that, that, that takes care of a lot of my technical questions. As far as I, I agree with council member Siemens that I'd like to see the numbers before talking about the phase in, just to get a sense, is it $5,000? Is $50,000 that we would be phasing in? And get a sense, as council member Kostick asked, of, of the income effect at that higher level. I'm not, I don't know if there is actually a problem there. I've had a lot, a number of residents raised to me the question of lower, long-term, lower income fixed income residents whose fees are going up a little, not a lot, and how we might address that. And I don't have a good answer to that one, because I, I don't know how to, how best to get a handle on those numbers. I don't know if the planning, planning department, planning staff has, has some data that they've used for, for some other projects that might help answer these questions. I had a technical question about how this interacts with the building, with the stormwater regulations for rebuilding, for renovating or expanding a house. So in the future, if someone is expanding their house and they have to put in features to address the additional runoff and they do that, then would that count as neutral? Or would that, how does that play out?
Yeah, it really will depend some on what we establish for a credit program at the outset. So that would, you know, they would fall within that process. Though we would have better documentation and, you know, engineering details. So we'd, we'd be on a little more solid ground. Right now, if you're adding to your property, you, you have to trigger 5,000 square feet of impervious area in order to require a stormwater permit on behalf of a residential property. For commercial or industrial or institutional, it's any change in footprint. So there's that 5,000 square foot hurdle that private, single family properties would have to undergo. And then depending on the amount of impervious area, that would be considered a redevelopment, which again, you're then required to treat 50% of the one-year storm. So it's not a full capture, it's just a portion, which will be the same thing that we'll be addressing with the credit program. It's only going to be a portion of a rain event. It won't be 100% of a rain event.
Okay. And so another, going to the, going, going to the, my next, my next set of concerns. So both council members, Cersei and Kostick noted that we have people's attention. And this is a great time to educate, if at all possible, and recognizing as everybody has already that you're already working full-time and then some. But this is a great time to add a few resources to the website. I've had a couple of people in Word two who are, who are expert in this field suggest some things to me. I can get that to you. We can see if it's appropriate, link to the county website and all the great maps they have. Some information, the FAQs, I think that's a, a great thing we could, if we can pull it off, that would really be, this is the perfect time. And along those lines, people want to know either, can they get credit for work they've already done? We've talked about that. And can they, what can they do? What can, what can they undertake to manage their runoff now that they realize what kind of a problem it is? What can they do? So this is, this is a moment I think that we'd like to take advantage of. And I do, I do agree with council member Kovar and Siemens that, that we, we need in this budget cycle to address both the questions of incentives for individual properties, if that is possible. And I'm reminded of the conversation with the county where there were a couple of the lower, less expensive measures that had higher impact on runoff. Can we at least develop, let people know what those are, build some education around that? Maybe there's an incentive, maybe there's not. And, and, and I do, I would like to see in, for this budget, some options laid out about how to address both the individual and the longer term and the, and the, the multiple property. And, and there's, there's a number of ideas kicking around. I won't go into all of that right now. But I would like to see that, that we can have that substantive conversation soon about what we, what we do to tackle this problem with the next steps are. Thank you. I think I'm about to run out of battery, so I'm going to stop talking.
Okay, because you went on video. We lost you.
You went on video. Flash. You guys go on ahead. I'll be right back.
Okay. Okay, so what I hear, your next steps is we have the public hearing next week. If.
Is it next week or the 24th? I thought it was.
The 24th, I'm sorry. I skipped a week. I skipped a week. I'm sorry. My apologies. I skipped a week. We have the public hearing and then we have another work session. So we have two weeks. There seems to be interest in looking at a cap and then phasing, whether or not that's at a level of like 275, above 275 or cap. Two seventy-five, above two seventy-five or capping, maybe looking at two seventy-five and like two twenty-five. What, Suzie, you're making a face?
Yeah, so I heard different caps, so if there's, I've also heard four hundred, I heard different ones, so.
Well, I heard, I, what, the notes I took were if we capped it at two seventy-five, those are fifty-one houses, or I was looking at the chart as well, and I ended it up. And so what I was gonna say is, yeah, Darrell, show it to me.
Look at that, okay, so that's good, so I just, I had just heard a different number, so I had written something else down, that's fine.
Yeah, I just double-checked, and we can double-check these, but I think giving council maybe two options of like. Two twenty-five, you know, either two hundred, two twenty-five or two seventy-five, like Councilman Cersei was saying, and like. Let's look at the implications of doing a cap at, at those different levels. I think two twenty-five and two seventy-five made sense as I was looking at the chart, but. I was listening and looking at the chart at the same time. I think that's one thing, I think there is an interest in looking, in addition to the possibility of scholarships. This year and even moving forward. As Councilwoman Kostic said, looking at more of an analysis of, of the information we have of like. The lower end as well as the upper end and who's impacted, if we have any of the socioeconomic. Data on that. There's an interest in, to the extent that we have capacity to do this. Provide on the website or provide people with education materials, so if they start asking like, okay, now I know I'm gonna have to pay more, what can I do? And in addition, I, I think, given the priorities discussion and what we've been talking about over the past year. I think there is a consensus on the council that we do want to do more in stormwater, particularly on private property. And so, again, that's different than the fee structure question, but we want to keep that front and center as we're moving along as well. And then the final thing was sending some of these key questions to Darrell that we keep seeing over and over again, so that we can just. Have basic language that we can share with residents. Did I miss anything? Okay, well, we can, if people, I missed something or something comes up. People can let them know what. What I'm generally hearing from council is that. There is general support for the tiered system moving forward and figuring out how we best do that. This year is what we need to figure out. So that's what I'm hearing from the, the majority of council, and so hopefully in two weeks that kind of sticks. If not, we'll revisit it, but again, we have. Public, a public hearing, another work session, and then if we decide to go in this direction, we will have to have some changes in language and stuff, so. Cool.
I want to thank everybody for the very good questions and suggestions. Very good discussion.
All right, I got Councilman DiBalla and Kostic have questions.
Just very quickly to that list, I just wanted to make sure I flagged that you were going to find out about the ADUs and how they're classified.
Yes, thank you. I missed that one, okay, Councilman DiBalla?
I just wanted to say a little bit more about that state bill that the city put testimony in on. Because we've talked a lot about the Maryland design standards. And many of us know that they're old and a little out of date, particularly with the rainfall in, uh, data. So I just wanted to let anybody who may still be listening know that the state bill, Senate Bill two-two-seven. House Bill two-nine-five, that the city supported in its testimony recently, will, will update. The design standards and the, and the rainfall data behind them. Which will help not just to come apart, but will, will help a lot of communities across the state to be able to bring. Stormwater programs into the twenty-first century rainfall patterns. Thank you, that was it.
Great, all right, well, thank you all for going through stormwater again, I appreciate it. We should have done this on Groundhog Day. Because, I know, that's what it feels like sometimes, but we're, we're, we're gonna do it this year. So, all right, so we are done for the moment with stormwater, and we're gonna move on to continue discussion of the council priorities. Well, we thought we would, we've been spending since mid-January when we had our retreat. You know, talking about our doc, council priorities document, we've made a lot of headway on that. And in talking with the city staff, it looked like we were at a good place to. Pause a little bit on us talking about our priorities and mucking around with this document. And listen to some feedback from the city staff as they have been listening to our deliberations. So that we could take that into consideration as we move forward in finalizing the document. So it is according to eleven, the goal for tonight's work session, if everyone agrees, is for us to listen. To staff feedback, ask questions to clarify. And then take that away with us so that we come, we think about it and then come back next Wednesday, ready to pretty much. Finalize our priorities document. Does that sound good with everybody? Okay, and we won't vote on it next week, but like finalize it and then we'll have a resolution that adopts it, but. All right, am I turning it over to you, Suzie?
I guess so, and I, I, I'm gonna try to share my screen if I get the authority, if I can do that. Let's see. Do you see that? Do you see it? Let's see. I don't know why I have problems with getting the thing up. I can pull it up, Suzie, if you. Yeah, why don't you pull it up, because for whatever reason, I, I do something weird each time.
Okay, one second.
Yeah. Make sure it's the new one.
Yep.
Okay. Now I've lost myself here. Okay. So do you see that? Okay, so thank you, I'm gonna play sometime. So I appreciate, first of all, that, that we have the opportunity to share our thoughts, our council. The council does a wonderful job of thinking through priorities each year, and then our staff. Enjoys listening to it, and then they enjoy discussing it, and then they worry about things, and, and it takes a little bit of time to go back and forth. Mostly, we feel really good about the kinds of priorities that you put forward. But we often know a little bit more information about some of technical ways of doing something, or we see something that you might have missed. And so we've had several different meetings of our senior leadership team to go through the draft documents, and of course, they go watching. The council meetings as they go forward, so next slide. So your city council priorities are to set the vision for the upcoming budgets and work plans for the next two years, and sometimes they have a longer view as well. The, one of the best things about setting the priorities is that it gives us guidance. Particularly when unplanned opportunities arise, and we say, oh, good, we can make progress on some of this that, that's laid out. And it also helps when we're trying, applying for grants or legislative requests, we can identify that it's part of the council priorities. Next. And so, thank you. We really appreciate the hard work that has gone into this document and, and into these discussions. Next. So just going to the next slide. So as the staff was reviewing the draft documents and listening to the council discussion on the priorities, there were a number of key themes that I heard from staff. One was administrative needs that the staff has. To deal with COVID-nineteen response, what is it that is them, the impact on our staff and how to get through this time. Is, is something that we would appreciate kind of realizing, as well as identification of, of technology that would help improve our service. To the council and to the community. The next thing, the next theme was a desire for flexibility in project implementation. Many of you have really specific, good ideas about how to accomplish something or the, a project or a product that you think would be great. We listen to that, we take note of it, we may have already suggested it or want it. But for the priorities document, we would ask that you, in writing it. Be more flexible in the terminology, so that as we may have opportunities to do something, or we hear from. The target population that they wanted a different way, that we're able to, to handle that. And then we want prioritization from you as the council of, among these priorities. Particularly, we have a new man, city manager coming on board, and that will have an impact on how much work can get done. Next slide. So with the city manager coming on board, there may be a period of time that's vacant after I leave on July first. There will be time required for the new city manager to get on boarded, to familiar, to familiarize themselves with the city staff. On processes, to working with you, to working with the county and other agencies. And, and to become familiar with the community, they may think they know the community, but until you're in the job, you don't realize all the different aspects of the community you may need to be familiar with. And during this time, it will be harder to get some projects done. It'll be, there'll be some, just lack of staff at a certain point, and a slowdown on some projects. Next. So the impacts of the pandemic on city operations will continue to be felt for several years. Will have financial impacts, one of the things that. We need to remember is that income tax impacts won't be felt for another year or two. And so that's something to be thinking of and being careful about. Resident service needs are gonna continue for quite a while. We've talked about the food insecurity, the rent impacts. Residents' community needs and mental health needs, and we also have staff workload and mental health issues that are gonna be impacting. How well we can do things over the next couple of years. Next. So we've gone through the draft document. We've made suggestions or asked questions that the council might want to consider when you finish reviewing your priorities draft. The, kind of got a markup that I will send to you tomorrow, but I'm going through the highlights tonight. Next. So we have some additions that we're recommending, I mean, we go in saying, oh, we want less, but of course, we come to you with some additions. So we'd like to add a goal on the COVID-nineteen response. Goal, we'd like to also add some language to the fiscal sustainability. The engaged responsive service-oriented government and the community development goals. Next. So this is a, a big one, this is mitigate the impact of COVID-nineteen on the community, and we, and maybe there's a different title, and city operations. So we have a new goal that would be progress through gradual phases of reopening in a safe, deliberate return to normal operations, or whatever the new normal is. Prepare a reopening plan that supports long-term financial resiliency and employee well-being, and incorporates lessons learned from the health crisis response. And in that, we would have strategies to budget conservatively for COVID-nineteen potential impact on city revenues and out years. And we would have encouraged permanent changes such as new council procedures, such as a hybrid Zoom and in-person meetings that are practical beyond the crisis period. So we've learned some things and we may want to take advantage of those. With a desired, with a desired outcome of continuity of operations through all crisis phases. Improved operations and compliance with safety protocols, and then workforce resiliency. One of the things I just want to note here, and, and I think one of the areas that, that staff kind of reacted, listening to council. We're working really, really hard. And just to do the day-to-day operations right now, it's harder than it's ever been. And so, you know, I think we want to recognize that kind of continuing to deal with that and coming out of that. Is a work, is a work program, is part of the work program that we have to face. Next. On, on a number of the different slides, but notably with the livable community for all. A number of the strategies that the council suggested had a lot of very specific. Ways of getting the work done, whether it was community ambassadors or certain library activities or whatever. And so what we'd like to do is to. Have more generalized language, such as enhanced community engagement efforts using innovative strategies and technology. To reach residents that rarely engage with the city, including residents of color and renters. And the reason that this perhaps doesn't have as many specific. Mechanisms to do that is that you often have to ask people what they want to be, how they want to be connected. And so leaving, having a wide variety of options is important. We don't want to have, use something to reach the same people we can reach different ways to, so just trying to think and, and be flexible as we go forward. The other reason that I have, the other thing on this slide is I added, and I just kind of highlighted in color, in yellow. Is the desired outcome that you had was expanded and/or improved programming tailored to residents who need them the most, or who currently. Face barrier, barriers to access, but we added more partnerships, and in several places through the document. It doesn't always have to be us, right, it can be in partnership, it can be the county, it can be something. So there's a few places that we are suggesting for your consideration, just broadening who does the work a little bit, or that, how we partner to get some work would be fine. Next slide, please. Under fiscal sustainability, sustainable government. We just want to note that promoting economic development to increase the tax base is important. Just as we look at how do we do property tax credits and other kinds of things as we go forward. One way to help out our residents is to have a broader tax base, and so just, that doesn't take away from. This element of the, other aspects and other goals in the document, but, but we kind of wanted to call that out as something that could be important. In the fiscally sustainable government, there was the banking goal, the sustainable investment in banking. We don't foresee an opportunity to have the money to do what was really asked for in that proposal. And in the next two years, or the staff capacity to do that. We'll continue to pursue sustainable investment, we'll continue to try to get bank prices down. But an idea of switching banks or that kind of thing is a huge lift. During and immediately coming out of a pandemic. It's obviously up to you if you have it, but that's that. We are suggesting a new goal under fiscally sustainable government, which is to really look at the reserves that the city has. And to establish policies for these various reserves. We have, the council has set the seven, the percent amount for the. The unassigned reserve in comparison to general fund expenditures. But we haven't really set policies about how much to fund our other reserves, so. Particularly the equipment replacement reserve, I gotta typo there, the facilities maintenance reserve, other reserves. What, how much should be there, so that as you're looking at the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city, that we're protecting those reserve funds? Next. This goes to the point that I made earlier about getting a new city manager. Besides just getting them, they need, you need to give them direction, and you need to onboard them. So just recognizing that there's, that there's a step there. Next. On this one. We simplified the language related to improving the website, before it was, you know, do research and explore and evaluate and whatever. We know it needs to be better, we've got some still thoughts about that, we'll be coming to you with those. So just simplifying the strategy to improve the website, improve so. So just simplifying the strategy to improve the website, improve social media, so that it works better. Next. We're suggesting a new goal under engaged responsive service oriented government that's primarily about technology and policies. These are for internal operations to improve internal operations. We have a number of work efforts that are done manually, or we're done on Excel spreadsheets that have to be transferred to something else. It's, many of the technological answers to these solutions to these would work across departments, would help many different units. They can cost money. So we've got a technology, technology service steering committee that's reviewing the, all the different technology requests and has always recommendations, and then we've always been very cheap about even proposing these to council. We're at the point where we see we have to bring these, many of these to council or discuss the options for those. And we would have brought this to you without the pandemic. It's really clear with the pandemic that we need to make some of these improvements. There's also some policies that would really help save staff time. You're familiar with the purchasing ordinance? Things like that that take a lot of staff time, that if there were changes, it could really help. The goal here is really to free up staff to better do council priorities, to better, to do work better for the residents, but also so that we free up ourselves from doing manual labor and instead doing the work that you want to see get done. Next. We've added on an additional strategy for your consideration under community development, which is to attract new business to come apart. We can't take on a lot of capacity with our economic development staff right now, but we do have vacancies. We do have some new businesses trying to start up. We have businesses who are changing their work model. So the more that we can facilitate them, the better. So this is something, I don't know that this would take on a strong amount of work. I don't think we've got a lot to give to that, but we wanted to stretch the goal a little bit by including that. Next. When you get the document, that's kind of the markup, you'll see a number of wording changes that are kind of minor, or we have some questions for some of your wordings. But we also added, for example, Vision Zero, not only to where it is in the document, but also under the climate change mitigation stat, strategy. As I mentioned before, we added partnerships to several strategies as recommendations. Next. So our summary is our key themes from staff. We have some administrative needs that we would like you to consider as part of the making the city work better, as goals in this priority document. Some related to COVID-19 response and technology. We desire flexibility and project implementation. So happy to get your list of all the tools that you think would be great and, but perhaps not as much in this document and to focus and have a little more flexibility in this document. And then we really want you to take this, your priorities and pick the most important one. Narrow it down so that, so that with a new city manager coming on board, that person knows what the charge is, staff knows what the charge is, when we're really doing triage, what's most important for 2021 to get done. And next slide. Again, thank you. We do appreciate the work. And one of the things that was funny is the same things that we criticized you about putting too much detail. We were putting too much detail in some of our stuff, so we were cutting our stuff back to. We know this is hard. We appreciate the work. We want this all to be successful for all of us. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions, and I'll send these documents to you tomorrow so that you can work with them. Obviously, the priorities document is your document, but those are our recommendations.
Great. Thank you so much. I think this was really helpful feedback. And I also think, you know, I find like when we get into the document, like, and there's seven of us trying to word one priority or one bullet and strategies, you get like, you know, what is it, the Christmas tree, kind of like, add this, add this stuff to it. So I think it's really helpful to have staff look at it, see where we can simplify, still keep the essence of what we want, the direction we want to give at the level that is appropriate for the council. And we really are, I think, well, I'll speak for myself, I really appreciate that feedback and the ability to kind of look at this document with fresh eyes based on that feedback. So, and I do think as we, with the direction we were moving in last week, which is then having this other document with some of the, I think Councilmember Smith said tactical ideas is another document that can live, that the, that the staff can use to, you know, kind of pull ideas from or think about when specifics has to happen. But when we want to keep our priorities document much more at this, you know, as a priorities document. So, I know it is getting late, but I want to see if anyone on council had any comments or questions for the city manager. Councilman Cerci.
I'll be real quick. Thank you so much for this. I think the feedback from staff is really, really important for us to keep in mind. I think it is definitely a challenging time for anyone that's working right now to try to balance work and your family and everyone at the same time is challenging. So I think this presentation kind of provides, I know for me personally, a slap in the face called reality in terms of what you want. What you may want, but honestly, be realistic. You know, we are, we are going to have to have a, bring on a new city manager. There is an adjustment that needs to happen. We are in the middle of a pandemic and we don't have limitless funds. So pick your poison, people. And I, and I appreciate that feedback. And so definitely we'll be going back through the priorities document with, with that feedback in mind in terms of identifying priorities, streamlining some of my wish lists, so it provides some flexibility and being cognizant of some of the staff challenges that are happening right now. So thank you so much for, for this presentation. It was really helpful.
Great. Any, anything else? Councilman Dibala.
I know everybody wants to wind down for the night, so I'll make it quick. Thank you for doing this. Having staff feedback, as Councilmember Suzy said, is, is very helpful, very, very good food for thought. When, I had, I think, two questions when, in the beginning, when you, and one observation. Last week, you, you mentioned budget, and this week you didn't. But I haven't forgotten that you mentioned it last week. That's my observation. The, the two questions are, at the beginning, you talk about the administrative aspects of COVID, and I didn't quite at that point understand what you meant. And so by that, you meant the, the other more specific things you talked about in the presentation, right? And not some, not that, that's what that signaled.
So I think the, I think that it's, it really is the fact that everything we're doing is harder right now because
Right, what you said.
Because it's remote. We're providing all of this extra social service, hands-on help, which is a lot of extra work and, and it's, you know, even the gentleman that had the fire, it takes extra hours, you know, it's just, it's just time. And so, so one of the things, and actually, I didn't even mention it, I was, I was going to call this out. We, we have a library to build, right, in this coming year. So there are things that are ongoing projects or work that are really a lot going on. And so part of this is just how do we focus and, and first of all, recognize that it's valid to consider it part of the work program to get through this. And then also just the administrative issues about, we've really identified some technological improvements that could help us meet some of your goals, and we'd like to share that information.
Yeah, I'm less convinced that some of the things that are staff-driven ought to be in here, but that's a, let's not get into that tonight. The reserves in particular struck me as why, why do we have to do that now when there's so much else to do? But maybe I'm missing, missing the point there. My second question had to do with the financial impacts over years, and I am going to assume that you're going to come with, during the budget presentation, if not sooner, with some projection beyond, like you did last year, some projection beyond just the immediate year we're going to be looking at. So we'll be able to more carefully evaluate that, that budget impact. Okay, that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right, seeing no other hands. We will look forward to the document and continuing the discussion. And yeah, everyone, stay safe. Hopefully, there's not too much roadwork that needs to get done to keep the roads clear. But this is one of those nights, I'm actually glad we're doing a Zoom call, so we all don't have to go outside in what sounds like really nasty weather right now. So anyway, look forward to our meeting next week and we'll send out the links to the survey when we have them up in the different languages, but I just ask that people keep pushing those out. I have to say, it was fascinating to look at the first 150 or so we got in in the results. So I think it's going to be really useful to this city manager search. Anyway, thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend and President's Day, and we'll see you next week.
Valentine's Day.
Oh, and Valentine's Day, yeah, everything.